I didn't think so. You know where the senior center is?
Yeah.
I don't know, and I hate to complain about it. Like you started.
Of course we do.
Got back from vacation.
There's two houses.
Is there?
Yeah. Maybe three.
Two different rooms.
The odds of getting out of here.
Every day.
Only one on the board that would probably know where that is.
That's not.
Are you there?
No.
701.
Oh, yes.
I do.
You know. And, uh, but, you know, honestly, this will be.
In the garage.
It's kind of like, well, you know.
Yep, there used to be a furniture factory there years ago. It burned to the ground.
Good.
Yeah, burned to the ground.
Ah, that was best vintage. It'll left to that.
Want to read it? Okay.
I guess so.
I'll put this in the. Read file. Mike is going to read his letter. We only have one to read.
He's surrounding it.
Have to. Okay, I'll call the planning board meeting to order for August 28th, 2013. This is actually a special meeting to accommodate a public hearing on the Woodmont PUD master plan. And just want to point out for our audience that there are two exits in this room. They're on the right-hand side of the audience, the front and the back. And if we need to evacuate for any reason, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, go outside the building, and move away from the building, and don't come back into our fire officials have instructed everyone to do so. I'd like to ask for you to please rise and pledge allegiance to the American flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Chris and Scott are traveling on business, so they won't be here tonight. I'll appoint Al to vote for Chris and Maria to vote for Scott, and that will give us nine voting members. And we'll just proceed to administrative board work to see if there's any administrative board work. Administrative board work, Cynthia?
I have nothing extra to me.
Does none board have anything? Seeing none, we'll proceed directly to our main business. And as continued plans, Pillsbury Realty Development LLC, tax map 10 lots 15, 23, 29C-2A, 29C-2B, 41, 41-1, 41-2, 42, 45, 46, 47, 48, 50, 52, 54-1, 57, 58, 59, and 62. This is a public hearing or formal review of the Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development Master Plan, and this is continued from our meeting of August 14th to August 28th, 2013. And any words from our applicant at all?
I'll only say, I'll get to the microphone first.
Okay, yes, so the folks at home can hear.
I'm Ari Pollock, attorney for Pillsbury Realty and the PUD applicants. I'll only say that it was our intention to proceed the way we had left off the last time, which is to have Emily Hines from the Cecil Group and Tom Goodwin from Shook Kelly come to the podium here and to field questions, concerns, comments from the board members and staff.
Yes, I think that is what we'll do. I just didn't know if you had any preliminary comments or anything, but basically, we've spent our last meeting on the 14th, both of them master plan, and that's what we'll continue to do.
Yes, oh, and actually, I should mention, I just handed Cynthia a letter authorizing a further extension of the review clock from this evening, when it would otherwise expire, until September 11.
Okay.
And so, we would ask at the conclusion of tonight's discussion that the board continue the matter until September 11.
Okay, just like last time.
Just like last time.
Yep. Okay, so what we'll do is we'll do our work on the master plan. We also have the development agreement, which we've had to go around with and corrections made and everything. That's been up on our website. We'll do that afterwards. We'll get input from staff and Ted Brobich, our third-party reviewer. We'll do the board, and then we'll go to the public. And that will be the order. And I think it's easiest in terms of the master plan, and even when we get to the development agreement, is that we probably start from the front and work our way to the back, and anyone can jump in at the appropriate time. Lynn, I know, has a list of comments that he submitted. Board members also, anyone in the public can submit information to Cynthia, and she's compiling all the information, which will go into our final document, so to speak. So, welcome, and.
Thank you, good evening. We are looking forward to hearing all of your comments, the comments from your peer reviewer.
I heard from some of us last time, and, okay, we'll start from the beginning, which is basically Section 1.0, PUD master plan information. And if there's anything preliminary before page nine, we don't have anything? I guess not, we'll start page nine. Which is purpose of Woodmont Commons, PUD, Woodmont Commons, planning process, there's a picture of the location.
Can I ask a general question?
Yes.
Before we get too far, Mr. Chairman? The last meeting in this meeting, we've asked a lot of questions, you've taken comments down. What do you plan on doing with the comments? At some point in time, are you going to come back and say, we agree, we disagree, we're going to take all the things we agree on, update the master plan?
Yes.
What's your plan?
We do plan to update the master plan with the sections that we agreed to, or come back to you with reasons why we don't.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, because I would say anything that is going to be written or anything is to get to Cynthia probably before the, by next week. That'd be a good time, Cynthia?
Yes, it would.
Probably, preferably by.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, Tuesday, the day after Labor Day is when to get all the information, and that is needed. We're making an assumption right now, Larry.
Let me add a footnote to that, which is, we're going to do our best.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I certainly understand you need time to review things, we need time to compile it. It is absolutely our intention to get you a revision based on the discussions that we had last time, and this time, no issue there. In terms of timing, I know you have a meeting unrelated to Woodmont next Wednesday evening, and that might be the time we're trying to distribute things to the board members, since you'll all be in one place.
Okay, because I know Chris, he's going to have, he's compiling his comments and everything. He hasn't got it to, I haven't seen anything yet, but he said he's working on it. He's been very busy with his work, so he apologized. But I'll let him know to get that in by Tuesday at the latest.
Actually, I'm going to take back what I said. I was thinking that the board comments would come to us by Tuesday.
Okay, yeah, that'll be the cutoff time for us to get things done, to compile it, so that we, on the 11th, and that's assuming the board grants the extension and the continuance and everything, that we can have a completed document.
I wouldn't anticipate anything back from Woodmont until Friday, based on the schedule that you just laid out.
Okay, okay.
That certainly sounds more comfortable to me.
Okay.
Sorry.
You can enjoy your picnic.
Yeah, Labor Day weekend, a lot of people are often doing things, and it's probably not the foremost thing on their mind, but it's there nonetheless. You'll sit, Lynn?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, Section 1, anything, anyone have any, I should say, further input from what we had last time?
I do, Mr. Chairman, on page 18.
Okay, yes.
Well, I mean, Section 1 is a large section, so is that okay?
Yes.
If I go to 1.2.2, and we talk about open space again, and the fact that I appreciate that you're willing to, that there's going to be a perimeter buffer. I guess we want to be sure or know whether or not the perimeter buffer is going to include not only Gilcrest, but the other areas that we spoke about, Hovey Road and, what was the other street?
Pillsbury.
Pillsbury.
The other one.
Okay, and I understand the need for the change in the trees, if the trees are not, you know, are not healthy or whatever. But my concern is that we have a delineation of exactly how much space that three rows along Pillsbury is. So I'm going to want to see some, I'm hoping that we can see some kind of definition of that, because I don't think it's going to be the same amount at every point along that road. And so, if it has to be that, you know, across from the first house, that the, it will be in 75 feet, across from the second house, it'll be in 100 feet, or whatever it happens to be, because of the configuration of those three rows of trees, then I'm hoping it can be that specific, okay? And then also, along Hovey Road and Pillsbury, what exactly, how much of a buffer are we talking? I don't, we didn't, you didn't offer three rows, and so we're not saying you have to give us three rows, but what is it that you are offering? And if like-for-likes completely means across the street from a one-acre home, there's a one-acre lot with a house similar to it.
Okay. So just to confirm, you want that, you would like to see that more clearly defined?
More clearly defined.
Is what you're asking for, okay.
Right, I mean, because Gilcrest Road is a good hallmark of apple trees, and I know that we've wanted to preserve that from, you know, when we really start talking at the beginning. And also, along Hovey Road, there's a nice stretch of apple trees, too, that is, I mean, I know when it comes springtime, the blossoms, it's just beautiful. You get some nice pictures of the sky and everything, and some of that could possibly maybe, you know, maintained. It would be nice, you know, that type of thing.
I live below 102, and I drive Gilcrest every day to work, to the schools. And so I do appreciate that it's being mowed on the street side, but if we're going to preserve three rows of those trees, then it needs, there needs to be a maintenance agreement or a maintenance plan in place about that, and how that's going to occur, and how that will occur in perpetuity. And if there's any provision, you know, if I'm the one that buys the house across the street, you know, that is going to have those in my front yard, do I have any right to say I really didn't want to have apple trees in my front yard? You know, is, what kind of an easement, or what kind of a guarantee will that be, that that will stay a scenic way?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to top off on Mary's point, if the trees are going to produce fruit, is there a plan, what's going to happen to the fruit? Or, I know in the past, some people that have apple orchards and stuff like that will either lease, or you may be able in agreement to have some orchardist pick them for you or whatever, but some arrangement like that, you might want to consider that, because they do, to be productive, they have to be pruned as well. So there is some maintenance, as Mary says, involved with apple trees.
My husband suggested that we give it to the food bank. He said, I'll make calls, just, you know, ask them, whatever. Thank you.
Okay, moving, okay, anyone have anything before page 18? Let me put it that way. Seeing that, let's, we'll move along. Any more, because right now, we're not sure if there's going to be a pond or what, so it's called proposed pond, so the maximum is 39 acres, is that true? Okay. And it can be less, if possible, depending upon what gets worked out with, how would it be to govern that stuff?
I'm just looking for the numbers. You'll see on page 66.
Yes.
In the land use density table. For WC 3, the conserve green space in WC 3 is a minimum of 39 acres, and that would include the proposed pond.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, on page 27.
Okay.
I know that this is just a part of the information plan, so it's just an overall view of what it might look like, and I think we already did talk about this, but I just want to make sure, because we did have sidewalks removed from a plan before, and so you had talked about perhaps putting the sidewalk on the other side of the street, and there is a street there, right? In front of those homes, so that it wouldn't be, the pathway that I'm talking about around the pond, if the pond does happen. Okay, so that I would, you know, the beauty of that pond will be that people will be able to walk around it. And we don't want to have that removed somewhere down the road, because somebody doesn't want it in their front yard.
So it's either called out as being a sidewalk connected with the street, or a trail that is adjacent to the street within that open space.
Okay, great, thank you.
I think the problem we had with the previous ones, it went through people's, on people's property, so.
Right.
It wasn't on common property or anything, and the proximity to a dwelling unit, or some of these were rather close. The trails were really designed as an afterthought, not before.
Integrated, okay.
Okay. Anyone have, continue on from, like, let's go up to page 66. Anyone have anything there?
Well, can we start at 43, which is.
Okay.
Where the plan and all of the waivers begin?
Okay.
I think that's what.
Yes.
Where, Lynn, you probably have any questions for the waivers, don't you?
I didn't have any for tonight.
Oh, okay, right.
And I think some of the, well, some of our, well, I don't know which, well, some filled in the development agreements, so. So if anyone has any questions, comments on the 2.1.4, which is lookability, and the current zoning ordinance is given, and there's an explanation of the waiver or modification that is being asked.
On Section 1.3, residential development phasing.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. Can you explain the rationale for the phasing, for basically the not limiting the phasing or asking for that waiver?
On the phasing plan, because we are building our own infrastructure within the development, that the capacity will be there, so that, I think, is part of the rationale that's behind the phasing.
The fact that the amount of trips generated is going to limit the amount of development that happens at any one time, also the idea of fiscal impact and remaining fiscally positive will also limit the amount of development. The problem, too, with mixed use is that it is hard, with a mixed-use development, to limit the amount of residential, the way you might do with a single family, because people looking to develop a mixed-use building will want a certain amount of residential units to make it work, on top of the commercial space below, in order to make it viable commercially. And so, the thought that if we're limited to a certain number of units, we might not be able to make it, make that work for the mixed-use portions of this development. And so, we're relying on the trip generation to limit the amount of development, rather than a calculation of units.
Okay, so a follow-up question to that would be, based on what I'm hearing, would it also make sense to ask for any waiver as you bring forward site plans and not have to go with this? So for instance, in that particular case that you just mentioned, I would expect that you would ask for a waiver in that particular case to be able to support the development needed, as you mentioned.
So your suggestion is that, rather than asking for the waiver in this document, we do it on a case-by-case basis as we bring it forward?
I'm throwing that out as, is that, you know, is that a viable option? I see it as that, I mean, I'm not sure how you would perceive that.
It probably would give us a better handle on what's happening, as we see things coming along, and what we do is look how it integrates in the context of this plan, and even, you know, within the community and the impacts. And I know the development agreement addresses really all the impacts, is that everything has to be tax, tax-positive, so it's kind of like a review process. So as a site plan comes in, or several site plans, a subdivision plan, is to look at it in the context of the impact, and then tax-positive, tax-negative thing, you know, what it has on traffic, I'm sure what it'll have on sewer, what on water, you know, water that runs off, you know, like parking lots or roofs, things like that. So it can be a step-by-step process, so that we have a good handle and a good feel on what is, what is happening.
Okay, we can discuss that one.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure, if anyone just jumped in.
How many of the WCs were, included mixed-use development? I could scroll to the end and look at the uses, but you could tell me faster.
WC 1, of course, WC 2, parts of, WC 8 has a little bit, WC 10, WC 12, am I missing any off the top of my head?
GL.
GL, yeah, and GL.
The majority of them.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, anyone on page 4, 46 through, Tom?
Getting back to the phasing question, you indicate that you're going to, it shouldn't be a problem, because you're going to have, you're going to build sufficient infrastructure in order to accommodate. But isn't it fair to say the infrastructure might take longer to build than your condos and whatever, you're, so that you're going to be lagging behind, the infrastructure's going to lag behind the properties that are going to be exempt from phasing?
My understanding from our discussions is we would have to build the infrastructure simply to access where we would be building the mixed-use and other units. So we can't actually build those until we have the roads to access them.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So you're going to have to build all the infrastructure that you're contemplating for all the properties that you are going to be exempt from phase? For a certain submittal phase, I mean, for, you know, for a subdivision or site plan, yes.
We wouldn't be building every single piece of infrastructure within the entire PUD prior to development.
No, but into the area where you're building. That's correct.
Right, yes. So we would have to come to you with that subdivision plan that showed the infrastructure to be built prior to actually being able to build, build the buildings, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move through up to page, it's page 66 and 67, there's some very nice handy tables that summarize things that we keep getting referred to with our questions. Any questions, okay, prior to page 66? If not, we'll move to page 66, if there's any questions there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Maria?
I believe, I believe you said in the beginning, before we started, that anything we talked about prior, you will address at one point. So last time we were together, I asked you about the 30% flexibility factor. So these corrections will be in the final document, like, when will we get to see these corrections that you're going to be making?
I think what we just said was, we'd attempt to get that to you by Friday next week.
Okay, so we'll be able to view something with the corrections that we're looking for by Friday, you think?
Yes.
Okay, I know, I know you kind of addressed it and realized, said Friday, okay.
Yeah, that's what we covered.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, 2.2.3, land use standards.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the, oh, yeah, on page 52, just a clarification for Section 3.09E, streets and classification?
Yes.
I'm just asking for a clarification of what Brett's being asked for here, or what the waiver actually means.
We're going to ask Ari to address the legal aspects of that.
Page 52.
Street classification.
Street classification, Section 3.09.
Yeah, we did speak about this last time. This was a requirement of the, I believe it's the site, subdivision regulations relating to road building, and that if conflicts arose between what the town would require for a street to be publicly accepted versus one of the street palette choices that we've preserved in the master plan, we would be allowed to build per the street palette in the master plan, but we, of course, would need to understand, and do understand, that the town would have no obligation to accept that street as a public way, no obligation to maintain it as a public way. We would be making the option, the election, basically, to deviate, and it would become our problem to maintain it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll say.
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Yes, Al.
Probably, I might as well get it out while I can think about it. There is, though, we're talking about streets and things like that. There's some language in here about the minimum width of a street being 12 feet. Could we have that minimum 12 feet for a one-way street or alley?
We'll take note of that.
Thank you.
Especially getting a fire truck or garbage truck, through if traffic's coming the other way, could be, could be a problem, but something to take a look at anyway.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify that to possibly also mean a two-way street that's divided?
A lane. The lane width would be 12 feet.
There would be, what, a lane width is one-way?
I'm thinking of a boulevard, where you may not have parking, so the full face of curb, face of curb dimension is 12 feet, but it's on both sides of the street. That's not necessarily a one-way street, but it functions like a one-way street, does that make sense?
You mean the boulevards, like with a grassy, you know?
Yeah, with the median.
Type of thing?
Yes.
Island.
Okay, 66, and then beyond that, 2.3. Tom?
On page 48.
Okay.
Section 3.2.
Performance standards.
I, maybe I'm misreading it, but I'm just wondering if this is, you know, something that's in conflict with what Mary brought up, the perimeter buffer of 50 feet.
The 50-foot is a requirement of the PUD anyway. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think we probably need to clarify that a perimeter buffer is,
in fact, the 50-foot land area that's required around the entire perimeter. In the case of Gilcrest Road, there are also apple trees, and so that would be more of a tree protection area or strip, which sits within that 50 feet.
It's more than, it's more than 50 feet, yeah, so.
And then that could be more than 50 feet, exactly. So they're doing two different things, and in some cases, if you have incompatible use of, you're across the street and you're creating something that is not residential, for example, then you would also be required probably to do some sort of screening buffering, the real type of buffering, not just a 50-foot distance. Does that help?
Well, actually, I guess I'm kind of simple-minded. What does it mean from the street? 50 feet plus the three rows of trees, or 50 feet total?
The three rows of trees happen to be within that 50 feet that is around the entire perimeter of the project.
Okay.
Along Gilcrest Road.
Is that what you were thinking?
Yes.
Yes.
It doesn't matter to me.
Actually.
As long as we have three rows, you know, whatever that happens to be.
So three rows of trees are included within that 50 feet?
Right.
I just didn't watch, you know, okay, here it's 50 feet, too bad it's two trees, you know, in the story.
No, no, they've agreed to three rows.
That's fine.
Whatever that current three rows is, that's how many feet it's going to be, and that's why I want, I just want it defined that way, as opposed to.
Right.
This, and, you know, because that will be an exception to this rule. And I know you've agreed to it, just.
Language.
Language.
You want it defined.
Yes.
And when we're on a road, where does?
And when we're on a road, where does the fifty feet start? Is it from the center line of the road, the edge of the right-of-way?
Right-of-way.
And the right-of-way is varies?
In those cases, whatever it is on the public street, it's the current right-of-way.
Okay. So the right-of-way includes the swale typically, and it's not gonna be right at the edge of the pavement, so it's gonna be more than fifty feet from the edge of the pavement. Most of our roads, or newer roads anyway, have a fifty-foot right-of-way, and there's twenty-eight feet of pavement. And usually, like the old roads, it's in the middle of the right-of-way. So the extra feet on the sides is for, you know, drainage, snow storage and so forth. So the fifty feet starts from the edge of that? Yeah, the rule of thumb is from the center line of a road, twenty-five feet back is town property owned by the town.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
At what point would we be willing to entertain asking HSH for their opinion on all these things up to this point, or were you waiting for?
I think once, they want to hear from us also. And I think the prime thing is our input first, and then we will get their report. They're putting it all together.
I have a feeling that when I retire from this board, you guys are gonna give me a microphone for all the times I ask you to pull it closer to you. You went close to it. I know, Rita. Cynthia, you gotta get closer. No, I mean, just like, push it down so that it's closer to your pain cue. It's just, I've listened to these meetings, and I can never hear Tom on town council night, which, you know, may be a blessing, I'm not sure. Or John during school board meetings unless I'm here. So, you know, you've got, so, all right, sorry.
Okay, maybe a little clarification on page forty-nine, section three point one, four point one, point two slash three, point one, four, point one, point three fences. That's the third group down. Maybe just a clarification on that.
What precisely would you like?
Okay, it says, "Private fences may be erected within rights of way, provided the easement is of sufficient width to allow safe placement of the fence. Similarly, slight distance considerations relating to intersection safety shall not prohibit the location of reasonable fencing in the limited context of signalized intersections."
And I think that was discussed last meeting, and we agreed to go back and look at that.
Oh, okay, okay, because it wasn't quite gelling in my mind what it quite meant. So bear in mind, because, you know, I might forget things that we mentioned. So I still got my original tags in here anyway.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, we did agree to take a look at that, but the discussion we had was there may be instances where the right-of-way is considerably larger than the traveled width of the roadway, and that it wouldn't offend site distances or safety to have a fence within the easement, provided it did not obstruct the travelway. I basically got the same looks then that I'm getting now, which is why I agreed to take a look at that. And I think we'll probably need a modification there so that we can avoid similar looks.
Usually I have a fence in the middle of an intersection, just to let you know.
No, no, I mean, and I want to be clear, that was never our intention. It was never our intention to provide a safety obstruction or obviously some physical impairment of the roadway. We were looking for the flexibility to have something in the easement, but not in the road. But if everybody thinks that's not gonna work, then I hear you.
All right, an example may be a good way to, you know, where there'd be a real-life example of that along with your, you know, revisit of what this really means.
Okay, and that is something we certainly can provide, a schematic of how this would lay out. And I think, you know, in, I can think of a number of instances where it really wouldn't offend anybody to have the fence either along the edge of the easement or even within the easement, because the road is straight in that area, it's not near an intersection, and it really doesn't offend the traveled way. But I understand we owe you a better answer on that.
Regarding the specifics of the fence, do those aesthetics of the fence still apply to town ordinance, or does this, do we need to clarify that more here?
No, they're only asking for a waiver to the, where it's allowed to go, not how it looks. And how it looks is gonna be back to all of the character.
Things in the characteristics here. Just checking.
Well, I don't mean to answer for you.
That's a good answer.
I have something on page sixty-five, and at the top, home occupations, childcare, and adult daycare. Home occupations and childcare, adult daycare facilities as home occupations are allowed by special exceptions in section three point one, two, point one, point one, section point three, point one, two, point two, point one, and sections three point one, two, point three, point one of the Londonderry zoning ordinance. At Woodmont Commons PUD, these uses are allowable as a right without the need for a special exception. The planning board shall evaluate compliance with the above referenced sections during the PUD subdivision and/or PUD site plan. So if there's special exceptions needed, that would occur during the site planning process, is that what it says?
What we're saying is that a special exception isn't required, but the performance standards that are outlined in the Londonderry zoning ordinance still apply. So.
Okay.
Yes. So we're not waiving or requesting any changes from those standards. We're just saying, we're just saying that the special exception itself isn't required, but you still get the opportunity to look at what's required in the zoning ordinance and make sure that if it's a subdivision and/or site plan review, that we are meeting those requirements.
Okay.
And that would be a planning board function. It would not be a special exception through the CBA.
Okay.
So saying that again, the planning board would have the approval authority of a home occupation, so somebody would have to go through and approve that. You just couldn't open up the business because you want to without regards to what your neighbors think?
That's correct.
Okay, move along here. Two point, two point three, land use standards. Also, if there's any other, how much of land use standards?
Page you on, Mr. Chair?
I was up to sixty-six. And then we can go beyond sixty-six if you want.
I have more of a comment than a question, and it's just on open space, and I don't know how we want to address this, but honestly, there's not enough open space, certainly in the entire development, but also, in my opinion, on the west side of the development.
Okay, you have to remember what is specified for open space is a minimum.
Right.
So site planning, subdivision process, we can, you know, I think what we, when we get to that point is we're gonna see what is workable, what's gonna give the, I think, the aesthetics that we desire for open space.
Yeah, I understand that. I think it's a little too far down the road. I still think, you know, within the construct of the master plan, I think we need to, you know, have some guidance for doing the site plan development. And I don't have the right language, you know, but I don't believe there's enough, you know, presented in the plan. You know, the plan talks about, you know, open space being your aesthetically attractive features. And open space, I think, is one of the primary aesthetically attractive features we have here in Londonderry.
Yeah, I know we talked about this last meeting on the fourteenth also, and to look at, because I think there's flexibility there, and I think kind of what some of us is asking is maybe, is probably less flexibility and more open space or something. But how to really define that is, I think, as you said, pretty difficult to, so.
And we understand and took note of your comments at the last meeting, and we'll add your comments today to that.
Thank you.
Tom?
I have a question.
Yes.
It's on the difference top. Page sixty-four.
Yep.
Cottage court, section B. It says, "Minimum lot sizes shall be waived." What does that mean?
Typically, the cottage courts are smaller units that can be used for affordable or elderly housing, and they are located around a common green space. They don't necessarily have to front onto a road. And so you will see a lot of times that in order to make these units affordable, the lot sizes can be smaller than what is within the PUD master plan.
So how small?
I've.
How many can you put on an acre?
Well, we've got limits that, for each subarea, that says how many residential you can have within that subarea. And as far as how small those can go, I've seen lots go down as small as twenty-four feet wide.
Oh, sorry.
Twenty-four feet wide.
Twenty-four by twenty-four?
No, twenty-four feet wide by the depth needed for the house. Some of those lots could be ninety to a hundred and twenty feet deep.
So these are single-family homes that are clustered around a common open space?
But if you're saying minimum lot sizes can be waived, does that mean you can have more than your overall maxima of units?
No.
Absolutely not.
Where does it say that?
Because this is lot size rather than dwelling units, so the maximum of units is based on dwelling units. This is just saying how they can be placed on the lot. It doesn't allow us to increase the amount of units simply because they're cottage courts. And the suggestion for the cottage courts.
Yeah, I mean, before we spend a lot of time on that, that's a very easy thing to clarify. We have no intention to add additional units because we've selected a cottage-style arrangement. And so we'll put in that performance standard discussion that there is no intention to expand the number of units in any subarea.
It's like minimum lot sizes may be waived.
Is it shell or main?
It's a shell here, which is.
That's the lot size, not the unit.
Oh, okay, lot sizes. Okay, moving on from sixty-four, sixty-six. Okay, two point, two point three, conserve green and shared open space land use standards. I think we made our points on how we feel about green space, I mean, open space, because it's a hallmark of the town also.
Yes.
This is trying to keep it Londonderry-like.
Again, we understand and take note of those.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our last discussion, when we talked about, I talked about in particular active open space, I talked about playgrounds and my concern that there won't be enough of them because of the language. And you had said at the time, well, we can, we can talk about that at the site plan level as well. But my concern about it not saying anywhere that it doesn't, that there doesn't have to be a playground within a certain amount of neighborhoods is that, and I know Tom had said that, you know, it's a, it's a selling feature to put playgrounds, but in Londonderry, have you looked around Londonderry? Developers don't put in playgrounds. We have one main playground in this town, and it's because a volunteer group spruced it up. We real, and the school playgrounds, it's all we have. So I don't know if that really works in this area, Tom, because what happens is, you know, I mean, I think, I don't know, I could be wrong. But if I'm a developer coming in and I don't see little playgrounds and subdivisions throughout the town, why would I look to put one in? Why would I look to spend the money if it's not, if I don't see it anyplace else in town? So I'm just a little concerned about it not being a have-to. Now, I know that Ari was concerned about what the rest of the board felt about that. If the rest of the board is not concerned with that, I'm only one board member, but I would like to have a little discussion about that, because I know it says in the different subareas that they can have a playground, and that's great. But there's not, no have-to, and I'm just concerned about that. I'd love to hear the rest of the board's input on that.
I think you want to allow the flexibility, because, I mean, all site plans are gonna be different, all subdivision plans will be, I mean, different because the areas are different, so.
Yeah, no, I realize that. I just feel like if, if, if there's no language that it doesn't have to be done at all, I just feel like we're not gonna get any playgrounds.
It's almost like we need to establish a minimum for having playgrounds.
Yeah, I may not be explaining it right. I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm not looking for a playground every five blocks, but I'm, I would hate to see this kind of development come in, and this many neighborhoods come in, and they're not the playground recreation for these children outside of our one playground and our school playgrounds. I am concerned about that. To me, it's an issue. So I would love to hear what everybody else has to say.
There are playgrounds off of Yellowstone in that area for that subdivision, if you ever take a ride up there.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
The Mountain Home State Plaza.
And there's one.
Yellowstone is off Litchfield Road.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah, I don't even know.
Notice the Indians.
I mean, I, you know, I stand corrected if I.
I think they have three playgrounds for, like, let's say, twelve streets up there.
Okay, well, I stand corrected then with that, but I still don't think there's much presence of it in this town.
I think it's been the experience of the board, well, at least of me, that when a subdivision comes in and there's gonna be a number of units there that are gonna attract children, that they do put it in, just because it is a selling feature. Just in the neighborhoods that I've seen where there are playgrounds, they're not, you know, as nice as the one in town.
Right.
Because they're smaller, they're just dealing with that neighborhood, and they don't want to attract people from outside of their neighborhood to go to that park or that playground.
Well, since I've been on the board, there's been a lot of adult communities that have wanted.
Right, I mean, really, we haven't seen a whole lot.
I haven't been part of the discussion, you know, prior, you know, it has to do with family neighborhoods. But I don't know, I just feel a little passionate about this, but I'm just one member. So if everybody else feels more content that it's not a have-to someplace, then, again, I'm only one member, so.
Back in the eighties, this town had a requirement of subdivisions at ten percent had to be provided for recreation. You'd be up in that area to decide what to do with it. And it did end up, New Hampshire Supreme Court, and it was considered a taking.
I'm sorry, considered what?
A taking, taking of property, making it a requirement. I mean, that is an area, I mean, we do have to be careful. So I think in a master plan, you don't really want it as a requirement type of thing.
Well, if somebody's.
Flexibility there, that you can, you can do it.
I mean, the concern comes to the safety issue too, who's maintaining that equipment. Open space for kids to play is sufficient as well. But I, to go back to your point, I think it depends on where you're, where you're thinking of placing them. I mean, clearly where you have single-family homes with one-acre lots, most of those homes are probably gonna put up their own place sets in their backyard. They probably don't need a place. I'm not saying it's not, may not be desirable, it just may not be a reality.
Okay.
Whereas if you get into a more dense area with more families in a more compact area, I could understand and envision that there would be one there.
If we're taking a poll, I'd prefer.
Well, I'm not asking for a poll. I just, I just want, this is our opportunity for everybody else. If nobody else feels strongly about that, then, again, I'm only one member, and I guess when it comes to the site level, site plans, we'll see what comes to the table.
Yeah, I mean, that's where the specificity of something like that.
Okay. I'm done with playgrounds then.
Okay.
Just bring them up at the site, Sam, up there, Maria.
Point of clarification, page sixty-six, accommodations. You have hotels, and you have three at five hundred and fifty, and then you have boutique hotels, which is plural, and you have rooms at a hundred. And if I look down at footnote four, it says, "The total of all boutique hotel rooms within the PUD may not exceed one hundred rooms." You can interpret that as, with the plural, that I can have more than one boutique hotel that will total more than a hundred rooms, so.
No.
Kind of double total a hundred rooms, excuse me, not more than. So is the intention here that we would have, we would have the possibility of three five hundred and, three five hundred and fifty, not to exceed five hundred and fifty rooms, but then as many boutique hotel rooms as we would put up, not to exceed a hundred rooms?
On page fifty-three, boutique hotel is defined as a hotel containing up to ten guest rooms. So the maximum you could have would be ten boutique hotels of ten guest rooms each, equalling a hundred rooms total throughout the whole PUD. That'd be your maximum, is the ten times ten. The hotels is a maximum of three hotels, not to exceed five hundred and fifty rooms total. So it's not one, it's not three hotels of five hundred and fifty rooms each.
No, it's three hotels.
Yeah, just to make sure that was also clarified at the same time.
Does a bed and breakfast fall under boutique hotel?
The bed and breakfast homestay would follow your own current Londonderry zoning ordinance rules. We don't have a separate bed and breakfast, it's the boutique hotel. There was some confusion when we were talking about it earlier, and we clarified this with staff and with your peer review consultant to change the name to.
There was some confusion when we were talking about it earlier, and we clarified this with staff and with your peer review consultant, to change the name to boutique hotels.
I think the difference between the two is that the bed and breakfast is owner-occupied, and that the boutique hotel could be run by an operator.
Okay, anything else on page sixty-six, sixty-seven? We have talked about conserve green and shared open space land use standards. Anything else, anything else there? Sub area composition principles and standards. And then we get into the individual sub areas. I think we're over here in the discussion on apple trees. Okay, two point three, PUD subdivision regulations and standards.
What page?
That is page one eleven. If there's any questions in the sub areas, I'll, you know, feel free to jump in. And this has a fair amount of detail, but different types of village center block type, neighborhood block type. Okay.
I have a question on one fifty, which is-
Okay.
Regulations and standards, not designs and standards.
Okay, up to one fifty.
Right. I have a question about the reduction of parking. One of the concerns we've had in town about parking is, well, first of all, we generally don't make people build out all of the parking that might be necessary, but that they show that there's the ability to build it if it needed, if it's needed, because of change of use. So I guess I do have a concern with, well, I don't guess, I have a concern with the part B, where we're talking about the reduction of parking. Today, this might be the type of business that doesn't require fifteen spaces. But tomorrow, a new tenant may come in, and they may have the need for twenty-five spaces. And that might have been what we would have originally asked for because of the size of the building and the potential uses. So I do have a problem with us waiving the, or having it be in here, that we can reduce it, or, or does it say that we can, or that we?
It says we may.
Oh, it does, we may, never mind.
What may reduce or waive.
Never mind, I thought it was one of those shall words, never mind.
That's fine.
Nobody would be too sure, though, Mary, so. Okay, we're up to one fifty. Anything before one fifty at all? If not, we'll continue. We've talked about perimeter buffers. It does mention along Gilchrist Road, but we've, we'd like to see primitive buffers that are along Harvey and Pillsbury. Okay, then the types of open spaces, which is quite a few of them. We're into PUD subdivision signage on page one sixty-three. Subdivision landscape, cultural resources. Up to one seventy, utility infrastructure. One seventy-one, building lots, architectural guidelines, so forth.
The only place that you expect that you're going to put a sign that would be higher than eight feet or ten feet would be in a gateway area, right? Where an entrance to, like, it says the sign area shall not exceed sixteen, I'm on page one hundred and sixty-four, I'm sorry. No, that's square feet. All right, just have a problem where it says that on page one sixty-three, except that sign height may exceed ten feet as indicated below. And then there is no indicated below, it's like below means three or four pages later.
So you'd like us to clarify that reference on page one sixty-three and say exactly where we're, okay.
That it is indicated. And then where is it indicated, so that I can, you know, be sure, assured that, because I do, you know, the example of the ground-mounted directory sign is fine. The example of the pole-mounted directory sign is fine. The example of the gateway sign, where would those kind of signs go? Where, where is, because that's obviously more than eight feet high or ten feet high. And so where, is that just like on ninety-three, you know, along ninety-three?
The gateway would be at the entrance to the PUD, to Woodmont Commons itself, to indicate to people that they are coming into that area.
So would that be like on Garden Way, Garden Road, or whatever, Garden, whatever it's called, Garden Lane?
Garden Lane.
So instead of what we have now for, or in addition to what we have now, where would it, would it be up below, beyond, like where Market Basket is now, in that area right there? Or is it on one oh-two, I guess is my question. Where is, are you, do you have in mind where you're going to put it?
Yeah, I think what the, or what the PUD master plan says is they can be at any of the commercial entrances to the development, and they cannot be anywhere adjacent to the abutting AR1 zoning. So you would not be able to do it on Pillsbury if there's residential across the street from it. These would only be limited to the commercial entrances.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we are.
I mean, the height is not, not to exceed sixteen feet.
Well, that's a sign, that's a sign area.
That's a sign area, that's what I thought too, but what is the, do you list a maximum height?
Not on that one.
Site plans. In the section on site plans, yes.
It couldn't be much taller than sixteen feet unless they were keeping it a foot wide the whole way up, you know. It'd have to be a, it'd have to be a really narrow sign if it's going to be, you know, any larger than that. That one that they show in the example wouldn't fly.
No, I mean, that has to be more than sixteen square feet.
Unless that's art.
So unless High Point is the only thing that they're counting as part of the sign, and that other decorative thing is something that you're going to try and squeeze by as a decorative thing and not a sign.
We could look at a more appropriate picture of a sign to make it clearer.
Thank you.
Also, one sixty-four at the bottom on the gateway signs, the signs may be illuminated using ground-mounted lights. You tend to like downcast lighting to minimize, you know, light scatter and everything like that. The ideal thing is like externally, you know, illuminated downcast lighting, it looks claudial, you know, type stuff.
We'll take note of that.
Even though it's not in our, I think it's suggested in our sign regs, but you can have internally illuminated signs also. Okay, beyond the one sixties, anyone have? One seventies, utility infrastructure?
Well, wait, just back to one sixty-six.
Okay.
On page, where it talks about internally lit signs are acceptable, provided that they meet the requirements of the PUD master plan. I just want to make sure that John or somebody who knows about signs and stuff like that, and knows how I feel about signs and stuff like that, make sure that that's okay.
I'm not sure I'm following what your question is.
Well, like the internally lit signs that we have along the school with the movable.
I don't think that's what they mean.
No.
They just mean that the sign itself is illuminated from the interior. Very often, the background is required to be opaque, and only the letters can be displayed.
Okay.
That's an internal light source. I don't think, I think actually it's stated in here somewhere that movable signs, changeable signs are not permitted.
Well, they wouldn't be anywhere.
Right, well, they could be.
That's an exception, we would not. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's on page two oh-four, just so you know. Animated moving flashing and noise-making signs are prohibited since age.
We know how Mary feels about that.
Yeah. That's very well marked, that page.
You get that one, Mary. Okay, anything else on signs? We'll move on. Okay, so it's lighting. Landscape. Stormwater management.
Art?
Yes.
I don't know if I mentioned it last week or not, I may have, and I apologize if I did mention it. But we had talked a little bit about stormwater runoff, and we had had some discussion at length over a couple of meetings about there being no additional stormwater runoff.
Yes.
Development, and we need a positive statement in this section saying that.
I think it's part of the state law. You have to meet state requirements for stormwater management, so. But are you suggesting that they also have it in here?
Well, that's, that's my suggestion, yes. Because I think it's, it was an important point that we made, and we discussed it at length. I think it's just an important point to have in the plan. I understand the pushback if it's part of state law, but.
It would be governed by state statute.
You're both right. I have a note to do that, and Cynthia is correct, it's state law. So I'm happy to put it all over the place because we have to do it anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question on page one sixty-eight, subdivision landscape. I know we had mentioned this before about the concern for who's going to care for the street trees, those trees that are planted in the medians and the boulevards, and I don't know if we ever answered that. If we did, I apologize, but is there an answer for that?
I believe we discussed it last time, and we have taken note of that, and will provide answers again.
Okay, so you're going to get back to us on that one?
Exactly, with all of that.
I wasn't sure if we went over that one or not. I have it written down, okay. Developer.
That's an easy one. It's the developer unless the street is publicly accepted by the town, in which case the town picks up the obligation to maintain whatever's part of that easement and streetscape area. And as we've discussed, the town does not have the obligation to pick up those streets. So the developer, the first instance, unless it is assigned to somebody else as the project moves forward.
Okay, so the secondary streets and the inside streets?
Absolutely. I mean, in those instances, the land will be privately owned, and it's ultimately the landowner, but in most instances, it's the developer.
Okay.
The developer, what I should say is the developer is the landowner.
Right, so they have to manage their landscape.
They have to manage the landscape.
Okay.
So what if we have a boulevard, the main boulevard going down, and it's got the pretty trees in the middle?
That's kind of what I was thinking.
And the town decides it doesn't want to be obligated for that, so then who pays for that?
The developer.
Because we don't accept them. You?
You could create an easement of some kind, requiring that those trees, that that median belongs to the developer in terms of maintaining it the right-of-way in the streets. Might become part of the town's responsibility if it's accepted, but.
Or it could be a requirement of the acceptance that their maintenance agreement would be retained by the developer. So you accept the street, the right-of-way, but the maintenance agreement is, is written. It's a condition of acceptance, you decide how you're going to accept it.
So would that be at the site plan level? That would be in the developer agreement, where would that be?
That would be at the site plan level, because that's where you would discuss the design of the particular roadway.
Or subdivision, if it's-
Yeah, most likely subdivision, that's true.
Yeah, I was going to say, it wouldn't really be a site plan. Because we're talking about a stretch of road.
It's quite common that both applications would come in. You would, you would subdivide for the purpose of having a site plan adopted, but, correct, technically, it would be subdivision.
So at a future point, we would talk about this and have some say in this, what you're telling us, Cynthia?
Yes.
Okay. But additionally, if they decide that they're going to, I mean, the roads that they're talking about are private roads, and in the future, they say, we'd like to dedicate these to the public, we'd like to have the town take it over, that's when you could also have a maintenance agreement in place. And we won't accept them unless you agree to maintain the boulevards or whatever.
Okay, everyone all set on, on that? So building, building lots, okay, there's all sorts of building types and so forth. We get up to where we were on general sign guidelines. We've got some questions on that. That's page two oh-four. And more signage as we go on there.
Is there a norm for how temporary, temporary signs are?
Temporary, temporary signs.
Well, I mean, it says, without limitation for the later provisions on page two oh-two of this section, the following signs are allowable at the PUD site plan level. And temporary special event signs, temporary sign advertising non-residential property, which makes sense. I mean, if you're, you know, but temporarily portable signs in the public right-of-way, which we've already said A-frame signs are okay, and those are in the right-of-way. So what, how temporary, though, is temporary?
On page two ten, we have a definition for under five on the left-hand column. We have a definition for temporary promotional signs. I think we can certainly take your comments that we should address the others as well.
Yeah, maybe we can take a look at our, our current sign ordinance. That'd probably be a good, good guideline right, right there. What we allow, what we don't allow.
There's, and thank you for coming to this page, because this one has a really big square around it. Because the total sign area shall be limited to two square feet per one linear foot of building length, but shall not exceed a three hundred and fifty total square feet per building. So that means we can have a thirty-five by ten square foot, or foot, sign.
Yes, and we, you did mention that at the last meeting, we took careful note of that comment.
Okay.
But in those cases, isn't the intent so that you can, like, you can see it from ninety-three?
Ninety-three, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, and if this is the one that's, you know, next to ninety-three, like, we have Harvey Windows, and that sign along the building is on the building, though. It's not a, they don't have another big monument sign like this that says Harvey Windows. They just have it on their building so that people can see it from ninety-three.
Just to clarify, this is building signage, so the three hundred and fifty square feet is-
Right, so this is like an entrance to the building area, like, like Home Depot, no?
No, no, it's on the building.
It's on the building.
Yes, the monument signage is the next one. Next, for people who can't read the, behind you, monument signage is B, and this is building signage on the building, under A.
I do, for, we did discuss this last time. I do have a note in building signage on the fifth item that we were going to put a clarification that the sign couldn't be taller than the building.
Yes, yes.
I know it was, I think it was your concern, in fact, that we would have, you know, a building that was dwarfed by its sign, and of course, that's not our intention.
Anything else on signs? Lighting of signs? Landscape, that's, I think, is the, lookability standards. Landscape, that's, I think, is the lookability standards. Two point four, point seven, PUD site plan, stormwater management. Then we get into the administration, modifications and amendments to PUD master plan. And then we'll go to section three point zero. So anything before section three point zero? And section three point zero is mitigation improvement requirements and starts with transportation. I know we've had a lot of discussion on transportation. Utilities, there's the chloride management program.
I have a question on chloride management program. On page two twenty-four, like the first, the last two-thirds that I column, it seems to talk to requirements the town has to meet. And I'm just not sure that that's appropriated here. That's how I read it. You know, two-thirds of the way through the first paragraph, it says, London Dair will provide winter maintenance to town roads, parking lots and sidewalks in accordance with London Dair's winter maintenance plan. And then the bullets seem to talk to the town's responsibilities.
This was language that we worked on with John Trotter and it's resuscitating the obligation that the town already has with respect to that other agreement. It's setting the stage for what we're going to be doing as a private developer within the setting of the agreement the town already has with the DES.
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, relationship to the development agreement, which we'll do after this. Section four is supplemental documents. And it has a lot of, like a butters list. I think there's more additions that are going to go in there, like all the.
Can we go back to?
Oh, sorry, we can go back.
We've run for a second. So, Art, I understand what you just said. You were basically outlining or defining what London Dair is already committed to. Is that fair?
There's an existing contract that's in place defined by the town with the state.
Right, and. Yeah, and I think all I'm, I'm looking at it is similarly to how, what I was looking at is, maybe we put that language in there that says, London Dair is currently committed to this. And basically, from what you're saying, that you're also going to adhere to what we've committed to as well, right? To support that. I almost, kind of like, the way I read this now is, is what I think you're trying to say is that you're kind of laying it up to, we have a contract already in place and that you're going to adhere to that contract.
Yeah, we're going to fit, the way I would say it is, we're going to fit within that contract, but it's not our obligation to perform. It's the town's contract and the town's obligation. And what John Trotter, he's not here of course, but his concern was that we would do something that would harm the town's ability to perform its obligations. And so he was concerned that number one, we recite what those obligations are and that number two, we explain how we're going to behave so that we are part of the solution and not exacerbating the town's complexity.
Right, I think we, I think we both agree. I think you were right in there. It's just that when you see the word, the words, London Dair will provide winter maintenance to town roads and so forth, I would say something like, London Dair is currently committed to.
The agreement the town has entered specifies that.
Yeah, just, just.
You have the clarification, like what London Dair is contractually obligated to and then what Woodmore is going to do to.
Yeah, I understand completely. I will clarify that. And we are not placing, this language is not placing additional obligations on the town. We are just reciting the obligations that are coming out of the existing agreement and I'll make that clear.
Yeah, I think we agree. It's just that that's what I just need to be able to.
Sure, no problem.
Okay, Al, let me get the.
Okay, one question. Can you explain the mechanics of the improved weather monitoring?
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
Page two twenty-four.
Two twenty-four.
Improved weather system monitoring. Can you explain the mechanics of how that's done?
I'm looking to.
Just to set this into context, you're right that the town has a contract. And within that is this line that, geez, we recognize that this area is also impacted by private parking lots and private roads. So there is no game plan for those private parking lots and private roads. And so what we've laid out is a program to address our private roads and serve as a model. And so it identifies all the things that we're going to do, you know, training of our snowplow operators, calibrating the equipment that we use, but making sure that people who clear roads for us have been certified by the state. Okay, so under that is, you know, the last item, which is also part of the state's plan, which is having good, solid, valuable information, knowing what the weather forecast is going to be, so that you lay down the appropriate amount of the proper, of the proper chemical so that if, you know, if it's going to be really, really cold, you hit the roads and pre-treat them, but you treat, pre-treat for a certain amount. And sometimes it's, you know, it's like a crap shoot. Am I really going to go out there and do this in this area because it's not going to be cold tonight and we're going to get, we're going to get a thaw? So it's this monitoring and the state has a system of providing that information out to the towns and we want to make sure that we're part of that information so that we make rational, right decisions. And I think as we were talking about it before, so you go to some of these private parking lots and it'll be, just be white because they're worried about slipping and falling and they're paying a contractor to come there and make sure that we have zero ice in this place. And what we're trying to do is monitor properly and maybe we're going to have ice, but we're going to predict when that ice is going to be there and we're going to treat it properly. So it's this informed decision about when we get out there and how we treat it. And it's all part of the state system of providing that information out and we're going to be part of that system also.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the explanation.
Okay.
So thinking more about snow removal too. Do we need to address a snow removal policy or plan at this level? Or I know we typically get into the site plan, we have snow storage and that types of things that we talk about as well. But I'm wondering, you know, if we have fifteen or twenty different site plans, you know, how are we going to make sure that they all play together so snow removal doesn't become an issue for the town?
Yes.
We weren't sure if you were asking that as a policy question to the chairman or to us.
I'd like your opinion on doing something, on having something like that. I suspect I know what your opinion will be.
You do live in New England, don't you?
I do, yeah. What I know is that this is a complicated subject matter because you're trying to make the road safe but not overload the chloride in the watershed. Same goes with storage of snow on private properties. And the salt reduction plan discusses goals or objectives to try and educate and reduce and be, as Jimmy was just explaining, smarter when it comes to forecasting about, you know, using better information so you're not over treating. I think the same can be said for every site plan that comes forward for this entire watershed, not just the PUD. I envision the town will likely consider some new regulations that relate to that subject matter. I don't know if they exist now, I don't think they do. But the answer to your question is, it's a subject matter for the site plans.
What I think is, would you, Cynthia?
What I was going to add is that at the site plan subdivision level, you can probably require that they take a cumulative look at where they've come from and how to address that.
That's, of course, correct as well. And you'll have the added benefit in this instance of working with a common developer who has a connection to each of these properties. It's not what you have now, which is a scattershot of different owners bringing in different proposals and saying, look, I don't have anything to do with what's going on over there.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know that there's some mentioning of snow removal and so forth that is in here.
You know, the big question I get into is in the commercial area. Obviously, we'll be probably having to remove snow from there and what do we do with it? You know, it's not like pawing roads and pushing it into the swales. And trying to keep it out of the pond or, you know, snow loaded with chloride and car oil and things like that, it's a different kind of animal to have to deal with.
Okay, the board have anything on, anything else on the master plan at this point? And any further comments, we email to Cynthia for Tuesday, or by Tuesday.
Please.
Okay, anything else, Cynthia or Ted, on the master plan at this point?
Okay, yes. Starting with the information plan, the overview of one point, two point two. The information plan really is sort of the concept plans that have been presented over time, starting with the design charrette, going forward into the last series of briefing sessions we had. And I think it creates sort of a level of expectation, maybe by the board as well as the public, that, you know, this is going to be designed as a traditional village center in neighborhoods with mixed use and strong relationships between open spaces, buildings and streets. But unlike a lot of PUD processes, this information plan is just an illustrative plan. And I think they make it very clear that it is only intended to be one of many, many different possibilities as far as the actual development picture. It is loosely translated into the land use plan, but when you get to the land use plan, it's very general in terms of the layout of the open spaces and the streets and there are no buildings or development patterns shown. So I think that because there is not a very strong connection between the information plan and the regulations, additional provisions need to be considered to ensure that there is that strong relationship between the buildings and the open spaces and the streets and that there's a, there's a degree of mixed use and a balance of uses in the districts based on the general notion of traditional neighborhood development and traditional village center design. So what I think that the board ought to think about is the, for example, in particular areas specifically like WC one, WC two and WC twelve, which are the underlying zoning districts are commercial and where the mixed use village centers are sort of, you know, presented and suggested. You may want to think about some specific provisions. So for example, each one of those subareas has composite standards and principles. You may want to think about making those specific review criteria when you get to the subdivision and the site plan level. Another possibility is to think about ratios so that, you know, in the density table, you know, the breakdown of X number of residential units, civic areas, civic uses, hotels, commercial, so on so forth, you may want to say, think about creating a ratio so that for X number of dwelling units, there should be X number of square feet of commercial or institutional development as well. So you create that balance is what I'm saying. So that was the overall issue with our team is that, you know, as it's been presented as, you know, a plan development, a traditional plan development, we want to make sure that that theme carries forward at the subdivision and site plan process by some sort of enhanced standards that ensure that there's a balance of uses and a mix of uses as been presented to the public and to the board.
I think that's what this board, I mean, some of it is hard to relate to, but I think we're looking for a balance, you know, like different, different uses. Not all the same architecture, but, you know, I think the overlying tone is more toward colonial, traditional, New England village type of architecture.
Well, we're not even talking at this point about architectural design, but really about the sort of the pattern of development in those tight walkable communities. And we want to make sure that there's some level of that, you know, ensured in each of the, or at least in certain subareas such as WC one, two and twelve. You know, WC eight is, looks to be predominantly residential as well as most of the other subareas. There's some exceptions to that, but in those areas of which are commercial today and where there's an anticipated level of, of commercial into the future as well as mixed use, I think we need to think about, you know, what can ensure that there is, there is a balance of uses. Because if you look at the specific building types that are allowed and the block types that are allowed in WC one, two and three, or twelve, it's pretty wide open. I mean, you can essentially do any, everything from a single-family home to a large format retail, which is fine as long as there's that balance of use.
Yeah, that's, I think, yeah, Maria?
Do you have a suggestion of what a good ratio would be?
I think we ought to look at the density table and break that down so that, you know, X number, there's the possibility of, I don't know what it is, five hundred units in WC one and there's a possibility of four hundred thousand square feet. Somehow that ratio, you know, and certainly we can talk with the development team and figure out what's appropriate. But, you know, basically what's presented to us today in the density table, I think we should start there and work from there.
Okay. So is my understanding though of the flexibility factors saying that if I, if I can have five hundred and thirty-five in WC one, I can have either thirty percent more than five hundred and thirty-five or thirty percent less than five hundred and thirty-five? And the same would be true with the square footage of the commercial? And so that would be the ratios?
No, you're correct. The thirty percent in WC one is over and above what's established in the table so that if it's five hundred and fifty residential, and I don't have it directly in front of me that I can get to it, but it would be thirty percent more of that.
It's on page sixty-six if you have to look.
I just want to clarify that in WC one, residential is fifteen percent.
Okay, well.
Okay, that's right. That's fifty percent for residential.
I just mean, wouldn't that create the ratios though?
No, that's, that's over and above what's shown in the table so that there could be a fifteen percent increase potentially of residential units. What I'm saying is that in WC one, if there's five hundred and fifty new units that are allowed, okay, the fifty percent would be over on top of that. That five hundred and fifty-three units or five hundred and fifty units should relate to a balance of the commercial so that for every, every single-family unit, actually I broke it down, for every dwelling unit, the ratio would be seven hundred and fifty square feet of commercial. Now, that's again, that's just a starting point, but I'm throwing out there the possibility of considering ratios so that we get that mix of use in those certain areas where we expect it.
So, okay, so I understand why you would want to put the mixed use in there.
I'm throwing it out there.
Okay, I understand why you're throwing it out there to some extent, but why would we want to regulate that? I mean, what are the pros and cons to that? I mean, obviously you get a more distribut, you know, distribution across the land use, but why would we want to have this?
Because, because it's, there's an open palette, basically. You can go out, like I said, anything from single-family detached to large format commercial. So there's a possibility they could do all residential in WC one and WC two. It's not likely, but there's a certain, it's certainly an opportunity.
So you're trying, you're basically saying it would prevent clustering if you would?
Well, it would.
Meaning all residential or all commercial?
It would ensure that mix of use that's been presented to the board and the public, but would also ensure that what the town is after, at least to some degree, that there's a tax base, a commercial tax base created in one of the few areas left in town where there is that opportunity. So again, you know, if you, if there's an interest in ensuring some kind of mixed use and some sort of balance between residential and commercial and, you know, this has been proposed as being market-driven, let's say that the market tomorrow is residential, apartment buildings, condominiums and so on. This would ensure that if there's residential to a significant degree, there would also be a commercial component attached to that.
So what are you saying, along with so much commercial, there should be so much residential?
It's, it's a way of ensuring that the general concept of mixed use village center and, and in areas which are designated commercial areas today has that balance of uses.
Yeah, I think some of what John said, would that like limit us to too much or, you know, like, you know, the way I look at the regulations is that the subdivision or site plan level to create kind of a mix that we want or?
It wouldn't limit you. I mean, the limit would be the ratio itself, so.
Would it be like a range of ratios?
It could. I mean, you could, you could shape it any way you want. I'm just throwing I'm just throwing out there as a, as a consideration as far as creating or ensuring some, some level of mixed use and balance.
Are we?
Yeah, it, you know, it's, it's hard to respond to these things off the cuff because these are major conceptual discussions. But it's our view that those types of restrictions very well confine a project and essentially doom it. And, and we have examples of where that has occurred. This, this project is designed with overall maximums that can't be exceeded. The flexibility factors relate to how amounts of density can float within the subareas, but it does not allow us the flexibility to exceed those overall numbers. For example, we talked earlier about having three hotels having a maximum of 550 rooms. The flexibility factors would allow those rooms to move within certain subareas, not even all of them. But you would never be able to do more than 550 rooms overall unless you came back to this board and modified the master plan, which you would be entitled to say no to. And so, you know, I, I understand the point but, of, of the comment. But to us, the essence of this flexible PUD structure is to allow you to come forward with what the market wants within some overall maximum densities, some minimum open space requirements and to allow you to populate your area based upon the demand that's out there. Not to force something upon the demand and, and hope that you, you haven't forced it too much. In our view, that's, that's, that's setting up a failure.
Yeah, because I think as time goes on, I think conditions could, could change and everything where, you know, like when a particular site plan comes in, you know, we, you know, kind of design what, what's needed and everything. You know, five years later, things could be different and then we might look at a site plan a little bit differently to, you know, take from the palette that's, that's in here, so I don't know.
I, I'm not suggesting that we reduce any numbers. I'm just suggesting that in given areas where you expect commercial, but the market may say residential, that we ensure that there is a balance. And that may mean that, that residential could get pushed off into other areas at a higher density because you have that flexibility factor that Mr. Park was talking about. But, you know, if we're talking about, you know, traditional village centers and mixed use and we're talking about, again, the commercial land where you don't have a whole lot of it left, that's just something to consider.
Yeah, I, I don't know how, I, I think the board likes at least some, some freedom because the decision really will reside with this board anyway at, at the site plan level.
Again, I'm just throwing it out there because, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the, the information plan and the concepts and, and the regulations and, and my, my understanding is that we're, we're trying to achieve a, a, a walkable mixed use village. And I, you know, I hope that's, that's.
Yeah, that's what I mean, kind of what we.
What we get to, but, you know, just to make sure that there's some level of mixed use and relationships between residential and commercial and open space.
Laura?
Maybe I'm misunderstanding something, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I was under the impression that the flexibility factor limited how much they could. If there's 20,000 square feet of institutional space available or, let me pick something different. Well, commercial use in WC1, 362.5 is the square footage, right? Aren't they limiting themselves to a 30% variation for that num-, from that number?
Over, over and above that number. But it's got to come, it's got to come from another district though.
Right.
That's what the flexibility factor is.
Okay.
The overall number stays the same, but you can shift from subarea to subarea.
Okay, then I think I'm understanding it correctly, but I would think that would limit the extent the wish, to which they could change the way this plan looks. You know, to a 30% change. So and a ratio might tighten that up a little more? You think it might be good to tighten that up a little more?
It, there's a, there's an overall limit and that, that there's an overall limit on the shifting as well based on this flexibility factor. But there's nothing to say that if the market suggests that residential's, mixed use or multifamily residential is the way to go, that they couldn't put it all there and shift as much as they possibly could to some other district such as WC12. I mean, it may mean, it may mean that there's not enough of a market for as much commercial development as anticipated here.
So you're, so the flexibility factor is only on the upper end is what you're saying?
Yeah, well, the flexibility factor, there's an upper, there's a, there's a total amount of development throughout the whole PUD. And then within the subareas, you can shift a little bit based on what they provide for in the flexibility factor, 15 to 30%.
I guess what I'm asking is if there, if the commercial square footage in WC1 is 362.5 and they decided that really residential would be the way to go in WC1, can they put no commercial in or can they only reduce that by 15%?
No, they can put no commercial in there.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's why I was asking, is it only on the upper side?
On the upper side, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Okay, all right, I got it now, thank you.
Yeah, there's no, no minimums and that's where we, I think we've got the flexibility at the site, the site plan level. And I think there we know what, what some of the market factors are also and kind of make, you know, the adjustments there.
Well, there's no minimums, but since there's maximums, it would, it would mean that then it, it's possible that that would never be built because they couldn't exceed, like in 12, they couldn't add the 362.5 to 12 because it's more than 30%.
Yeah, I think it's something that the board can think of.
Yeah, I, and just putting out what's possible. In terms of WC3, the pond, you know, there's an alternative information plan shown on page 19. You know, this, this has been presented as a major feature in the, in development, the, the pond. And, and I think it could be a terrific asset, but I think there's also a, a possibility that it won't get built. And it will always serve as an important drainage structure. You know, it's always a major part of the drainage system on the site. But is there any alternative as far as open space? Because that would be a major draw and a big piece of the, of the, the open space picture, even with surface water. And is there any, any other alternative elsewhere in the project that would sort of compensate for the loss of that major asset?
I, I think it is, it is a focal point and I think it could be a, a pond or it could be even a smaller pond, but a park.
Playground.
It could be a park because there's, there's the whole green area from the northern part, you know, coming down through this where, where it drains out and that is going to be, I think, the, it's like a spine. It's going to be the green spine of the, the whole, the whole project. So I think keeping it green and I think it, it's, it's an area for apple trees also.
I, I don't think apple trees will grow in that, but.
Well, might not right in there because, I mean, now it's, it's just like brush and, you know.
Well, it's an impound, it's an agricultural impound. I mean, and, and to, to change that will require state permitting and.
And I know with, with a pond is also the, the possibility it could end up being, just being a swamp or?
Well, it's going to be a retention pond.
Yes.
Or detention pond. The question is, is it going to be, is it going to be a retention pond, is it going to be a surface water? And if it's not, is there any other feature, that, that would be a major feature that would be missing that, that would be added to the plan somewhere else to, to compensate for that?
Oh, it goes someplace else. I mean, only other, other area, I mean, anyone who can jump in here, but. That green, that, that green corridor.
Yeah. Is this a question they can answer?
Yeah, but you're not specifically looking for water though, it's just, just another prominent feature.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, again, it's, it could be a real asset or it could just be another big piece of the drainage system.
I have one question, if I may.
Bill?
Probably you guys more than anything else. I think at the last meeting, this pond was supposed to drain 60% of the PUD for stormwater? Would you progressively increase the size as you develop phases? How would that work out?
Actually, that's, what we presented was a concept of how we were, our intent to deal with it. But, you know, we didn't, we haven't regraded the site. We don't know what the elevations are, so we don't know exactly how much water that we're going to be dealing with. But the intent is, as Ted said, that is supposed to be an attractive feature. We're hoping that we can get it permitted so that it's be open water. And it would be open water and we would treat the water as it came through the swales, try to infiltrate as much as possible. But I don't think that we're going to be creating it any bigger. It's just going to be lifting just the surface water a, a bit.
No, that, that's not my question.
Okay, sorry.
If you find, because of your hydrological surveys or whatever, you decide you need all 39 acres for stormwater management, is that something you're going to build right away or is there going to be a phasing process as you build into different phases?
I would say that it'll be phased, but there'll probably be a big hunk at the beginning, you know, so you can, it's not like, oh, I'm only building this, this first phase, I only need a little bit of it. Same thing like the, the infrastructure for the water and the sewer. The first phase is going to need a big amount of infrastructure in order to get to it. So it'll be the same thing with the stormwater management. We'll try to get the spine up and try to get, so it may not be completely built in the first phases, but the backbone of it will be built.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
The, the realignment of Gilcrest and Pillsbury, I noticed that that's not on any of the information plans. That's not on the land use plan. And that is a major piece of the transportation impact analysis, major recommendation. And I think, you know, it, it certainly is a, a consideration as far as the traffic volumes that are generated and the trips and so on and so forth. I'm wondering if that should be shown on the land use plan, the, the actual realignment since that's a major, major piece of the improvements.
I think we need to know that it's probably going to happen at, at some point on what has been presented to us from the traffic, you know, the traffic information plan. So it, it probably should so that we know and the public knows and everyone knows who reads the master plan that at some point in the future, there's going to be a roadway realignment. Gilcrest, Pillsbury, and then the, the major, major road that's going to go from 102 up to Pillsbury also.
Actually, the, the realignment is shown on the land use plan, but not to the same level as what's shown in the master TIA. And the master TIA is still part of this master plan. So any modifications to that will be shown on supplemental TIAs.
Yeah, but maybe just some reference to the TIA so that we know, we know what, what will happen. So, so when people look at it, that this is not going to be the long-term roadway. You know, what we have right now is going to be changed, modified so that the traffic is mitigated.
And the master TIA is incorporated by reference throughout this document and of course also part of the appendices.
On page 233, it talks about the three sets of documents are provided separately bound reports.
Okay, maybe something like maybe someplace toward the beginning that also mentions it so that people have an idea that what they see at the beginning of this is not, not, not a fixed plan.
Specifically to the road or to the incorporation of the master traffic impact assessment?
Probably to, I mean, I think both of the road and the traffic impact assessments.
So when that was presented, it was presented as a possibility, not a reality. Are you now committing that it's a reality?
I don't, I don't think we're committing to do it because there are some land rights there that need to be arranged. However, the reality is it will choke off our ability to manage traffic without doing it. And so, you know, can we say with certainty that it's part of the land use plan? No, because we don't get to decide what other people do with their, their rights. But do we intend to make those improvements? Yes, do we need to make them to have that area of the PUD come to fruition? Yes.
Thank you.
The other.
Uh, Cynthia?
The other thing is that that's the technology or that's way of dealing with the problem that we know today, but in 10 years, not that it's going to take that long to need that. There may be a better way to handle traffic that's going to be part of it. So that would be another sort of caution with really making it prominent at this point.
Well, that's why I wanted to clarify that.
Right.
So, yeah, because the biggest way we look at it, that we don't want to see it being developed and some point it's going to be, you know, the roadway mitigation is going to occur there, so. Yeah, that kind of reserve the, the area for potential mitigation of.
So, so just a, a follow-up, aren't you, to what you said, just so I understand. So I understand that you just, you know, there are other landowners that, you know, we have taken into consideration with this that, you know, we don't know what they're going to do. But at the same time, you also say that it's important to manage traffic control to make the changes to that, that space. So let's, let's take under the assumption for the moment that no one works with you to basically make those changes.
What's, what's the, what's the mitigation to that at that point?
We, we do have the land rights we need to make improvements. The question is which improvement configuration are we going to select? And depending upon what rights are available to us, we might pick a different option. We have current options now and can mitigate the traffic in, in a way that would work for the PUD. But what of the options we're going to select? I, I don't know that we're able to commit to that now because, you know, frankly, we need a PUD approved before we can, you know, get involved in who wants to locate where and, and what's going to be developed in what area. But, but having said all of that, I think the suggestion of committing to not developing in a way that limits our options is, is, is very smart.
Okay, yeah, okay, so a follow-up to that would be, at what point do we decide that that change needs to go into place? And how, how far ahead do we need to start working that before we get to the point where either we're in a, we're in an impasse with the, the traffic or we have to make a decision on one of the options that you have for mitigating that problem?
Tom can correct me on this, but I, I think it's going to be borne out by the subdivision and site plan process because if we can't mitigate our impacts, we're going to get a denial.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? I guess back to you Ted.
Yeah, I had a few more. The, the allowable uses table, there are, there are some uses that potentially could pose conflicts where they're abutted, you know, if they're abutting residential uses. And, and I'm thinking about WC8 primarily where there is some level of institutional and commercial development allowed as well as home occupations and, and bed and breakfast. So I, I know Emily had mentioned that with home occupations that it's not allowed, you don't have to go through the special exception or conditional use process, but that the performance standards attached to those in the current regulations would apply. I, I think that should also apply, actually, that's not really clear in the regulations. It should be clear in the regulations that when the planning board's reviewing a bed and breakfast or a home occupation in WC8 and to joining or to abutting single family homes, that those performance standards would, would be part of the review process. So for home occupation, for a bed and breakfast, for certain institutional uses like nursing homes and certain commercial uses such as restaurants or stores, there should be some performance standards in place to assure that they are compatible with their neighbors. Because that is predominantly a residential district.
Yes. Yeah, because what's going to butt on what?
Yeah, yeah, it's not really shown.
Probably there could be some buffering or something that.
Right. And that would be simply adding that to the list of performance standards that's in the backside of that, that use table in the regulations.
Is that something you can look at?
So you're asking us to add additional performance standards specifically to home occupations, childcare and adult daycare?
Yes, because I think that gets into an area, I know we have problems in town where like, so we even like commercial, residential butt on each other. And we tried at one time, looking at like our older historic buildings to use it as a very light commercial and there was objections from residential just about that, you know, looking at a doctor's office or a lawyer's office, you know, even a medical type thing. And it didn't seem to be, you know, well, very good with the public, so. There, there's sensitivities that are there, maybe that should be recognized.
And currently what we have. And currently, what we have on page 65 are the same requirements that you currently have within the zoning ordinance. So we do have the criteria.
We have, we have not altered those requirements for those, those three categories.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I think what we're looking at is effective density on it also.
Well, I think that the specific performance standards attached to those uses should be identified. It's not clear in this regulation that those apply as part of the review process for those particular uses in...
We'll take note of that.
Okay.
In terms of the allowable density table, we mentioned the idea of the possibility of ratios, but also I think what's really important is that the overall limit is really tied more directly to the traffic or the trip generations for these, the sub-areas than the actual development densities. You know, and it's sort of alluded to in the regulations and the development agreement, but I think in the density table, it should be specific that when you reach that traffic for that given area, and we're talking about areas WC1 through WC6, there's a traffic volume with and without foray, if you remember, the peak hour trips. There's another one for WC7 through 11 and then WC12. That really, when you reach those thresholds, that's where the development should stop until, you know, until, you know, other improvements are made or, or other, you know, condition, you know, other factors are considered. So, you know, you could say that the X number of square feet of commercial and institutional, residential goes in each of these areas, but the overall threshold really should be tied directly to that peak hour trip. That was part of the supplemental analysis.
Okay, the TIA, it's within that. Because, I mean, that's something we're going to have to pay attention to as we look at subdivision.
But I think that, but it's not clear in the regulations that that's really what the, what the threshold is. It's not necessarily, you reach that amount of development, it's really you reach that level of traffic. And it should be specifically integrated into that table. So that it's a, it's a queue to the planning board that we're getting close to the maximum number of trips that we've allotted for, we can accommodate in those collective, collective sub-areas.
Is that something you had looked at, or I don't know, discussions ensued or anything?
I don't recall, and I'd have to check my notes, I don't recall that we were asked to add this specifically to the land use density table itself. The requirements are certainly within the document, but we haven't been asked to add that to the table.
Would that help clarify, Cynthia?
We did have several conversations early on when we were meeting with the traffic team about these issues. So, pardon? Yes, they would not have been sitting at the table with John and their traffic team.
Okay, so just dealt with the...
We, yes, and thank you, Cynthia. We dealt with the density and the allowable uses and these standards. We did not work on the traffic and so had not been asked to do that.
So this is probably a little bit of coordination with the traffic part of it. So could that be done?
To add this specifically to the, I would want to make sure that I understand that you're asking us to add traffic, which is one subject, to a table that's specific to the land use density, which is a separate...
Okay, because I don't want to get confused at all there.
No, I think that the maximum trips per area, and it's in the traffic, supplemental traffic impact analysis, the sensitivity analysis, so to speak. It's specific, with and without foray, what the maximum amount of trips during the peak hour can be. And that's that, and those are those collective areas between WC1 and 6, WC7, 11, and then WC12. That's really the deciding factor in how much development. So it can be, you know, any combination of residential, commercial, institutional, but when they reach that, that limit, that trip limit, that's where it stops for those areas. So there's a, there's a maximum amount of development, but there's also those trips. And how you get to that through a combination of uses isn't really that much of a concern, but when you get to that limit, that's where that development's got, that stops at that particular area.
You can see that our feathers have been ruffled on this issue. And I think the reason is because we performed the sensitivity analysis on the traffic study for the express purpose of figuring out how the availability of exit foray would affect the densities that we're projecting. And we added a column to the table on page 67 so that we could take things back a step if in fact we had a scenario where the exit doesn't come online. And that, and then we had the supplement to the traffic study as well that talked specifically about what that would mean for each of the PUD areas, or at least the larger areas. So, you know, we had these discussions. Emily was not part of them because she came into the project a little later than that, but the traffic teams and Jane Howard from HSH in particular was involved in these discussions. Cynthia is right, there was quite a bit of back and forth on how that study would be conducted and memorialized. And maybe that's exactly what Jimmy was going to say, in which case I apologize.
Yeah, because I think we want to keep the coordination there with the traffic, because I think the traffic is, that's going to govern what gets developed and what doesn't get developed.
Ted, we did do that. I don't know where it is and if we made reference to it, but...
I know you did it. We have, we have the numbers right here, the sensitive analysis.
Yeah.
But it was Jane's recommendation that they get integrated into, institutionalized into the, into the table.
But, I mean, did we not build in flexibility so we could pick and choose
Yes.
what happened, just as long as we didn't exceed these numbers coming off of the, off of that zone?
That's right. That's what I'm saying, is we put the numbers and that's the baseline, that's the threshold, but you can do any combination of residential, institutional, commercial, or whatever that's permitted for.
I know it's done.
So the sensitivity...
We'll find it.
This is an internal thing with the, our, the experts here.
The exit for a sensitivity analysis is included in the supplemental documents under 4.2, along with the main master plan traffic impact assessment. And as Ari said, what we had done on the land use density table in request to, in response to Jane's request, is we had added the maxima for what happens if exit 4A is not developed. And you can see that on page 67 in the far right two tables. You'll see a maxima without exit 4A and then showing the two areas. Primarily, the concern would be the east area, WC12. What I'm hearing for the first time is the request to add the trips to the density table. So we've added the density table, we've added the density in response to the questions. It's the request for the number of trips that's confusing me. And I want to make sure that because this document is organized by subject fairly clearly, that we're not creating something that's going to be confusing down the line because suddenly we're mixing trips with density. So that's why I'm asking for the clarification. The density's in there, but not the traffic.
Or is it just simply tying it with a note saying that the density is subject to mitigation?
Well, I think it's tied directly to the trips. I think that the density is, is secondary to the trips, so that, we don't know if the maxima with or without foray is actually going to generate more or less trips than what has been projected. You know, there's a, there's a correlation, but it's not exactly, you know, accurate. What we do know is that we've projected what the trips are for given areas within the development. And that when you reach that level, that should be it. Regardless of how much you've planned for as far as your mix of uses in each sub-area, when you get to those trip limits, that's where it stops. I mean, there's, there's density and then there's trips. And different types of development can result in different types of trip generation, but there's that maximum threshold is what we're saying. And that needs to be integrated into the table. That was Jane's suggestion, as well as Kerry's suggestion. And this, this is nothing new. I mean, this is something that's been discussed. I mean, you can plan for all the development you want, you can put millions of square feet in there, but at some point, you're going to reach the level where you're out of capacity. And we're saying there's a threshold and that's, that needs to be recognized and integrated into the table.
But when we come, when they come before us with the site plan, don't we do traffic analysis again at that point?
Yes.
And we say, at that point, this is how much traffic this site plan itself is going to generate? And we say, as a board, those roads are not going to accept that, you're going to have to mitigate. So...
But that's different than the trips, the maximum trips. Each site plan and subdivision will generate some amount of traffic, but there's still that upper threshold here, so those, the...
But then we could compare that.
The key note of the fact that all of those site plans will reach a point
Right.
where it doesn't really matter how much square footage or how many dwelling units at this point up here.
Right. But then we could look at what in that report was the maximum number of trips allowed for that area. And again, if it's beyond that, then we have the right to say, no, we're not going to approve this because you agreed in your traffic analysis that the trips would not be more than this.
At the, at the, at the site plan level, they're going to be looking at trips generated specifically from that site plan. They may get to a point where they want to revisit those thresholds, which is fine, but they should be in there today until we get to a point where we're getting, we're getting close to those thresholds and they need to be reexamined.
Yeah, maybe footnoting it so, you know, to show that there, there is some degree of relationship, but I don't know.
If I could provide some clarity, one has everything to do with the other. The numbers related to density were derived from the maximum number of trips with the net sensitivity analysis from April, early April. The same numbers that were shared with the board, so that, the goal of that sensitivity analysis was, in the absence of foray, how do we provide a comparable level of level service on these area intersections? And that came with that reduction in density in those various areas. So, yes, we have provided that clarity within the sensitivity analysis to provide that tie in relation to trips, but that's already directly related within the density table to what backs that up from the assumptions for density. So it's already in there, it's woven in for the correlation between the land uses and what's assumed within each zone. And we need some flexibility within those zones for the types of uses, but we've already stated very clearly that with or without exit foray, we're looking at these maximum number of trips per major area of the project. And that should provide the board with the control that you can then measure against this document, because this is directly tied to the master plan for how we compare over time as the subdivisions and site plans come forward.
Not only that, Ted, I mean, remember, we had this discussion of what kind of credit we're going to have for internal capture, 33% versus 22%?
Yep.
And we defaulted to 20%, because, 22% because that's what HSH recommended. And so we think that we've got a, a level of conservatism built into our square footage, our densities. But every time we come forward with a site plan, we will know specifically whether we're having internal capture or not having internal capture, and whether we're hitting those numbers or not hitting those numbers. So I, I hear what you're saying and, and it's registering with me, but I think we have so many protections built into this. And when we go forward with the site plan, I mean, the, the volumes of documents that we have, the difficulty for us is putting our hands on the right one. But I think that your fears should be allayed that there's, there's plenty of conservatism built into that square footage and that density that relates to those trips. And when we come forward with a site plan, we will first estimate for our first phase, and then on our second phase, we will have definitive what kind of generation that we're having. And whether, you know, whether we're capturing or not capturing, depending on what we build. Certainly if we don't build a mixed juice in our first phase, we're not going to have internal capture. But our intent is to have internal capture, to create what is the vision of this master plan.
If I may? I, I know you probably have a laundry list of items to continue on, but I don't think Mr. Burris is, is indicating that it's not in there. I think he's doing what we asked him to do. I know when we selected his firm, we were impressed by their ability to take a 100,000-foot view and provide us with guidance, or at least my intent was so that we could get guidance from you to help the planning board make decisions, not through this document, then that document, then the other document, but rather in a more concise form to be able to make decisions. And I feel that a lot of your suggestions are coming from that 100,000-foot view, if you will, whereas site plan has more the 10,000-foot view. And so...
Or the 10-foot view?
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly. But to get down to that point. So frankly, your suggestions certainly ring true for me, and I would like some clarity to understand where all those pieces tie in. So, you know, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of resistance from the board about why we need this, but, or at least confusion, or confused looks on people's faces to why we need this.
I think it's complicated things. And I think the best way is to have staff make some, get some resolution here. We're not going to resolve it.
Yeah, yeah. I understand, and I'm not trying to overwhelm the board, I'm just trying to pose issues that were brought up by my team that, that we've been working on. And we've been working on with the development team, we've been working on with staff, and there are just still some issues that we still think need to be further refined. And that's something we can talk to the team about and to staff about as well.
Yes, that's the perfect place for it to occur.
I have one question with this. Is it, is it the fact that we're trying to jam that, the information that you're, you're asking for into this table? Because if that's the case, just simply let's put together another table with the correct information that expresses what you're asking for.
You just put another row in, basically. Say that the trips are...
Right, and I think what I'm hearing is, well, we have a land density use table and then we have a traffic study table over here, and we don't want to mix the two, that's fine. Put another table out there and let's, you know, I agree, I think that the clarity and the information is, again, this is going to be what we're going to be running with, is something that, that we're going to need to understand. And thresholds and, and items like you're talking about are going to be essential when we get down to that 10-foot level that you just mentioned.
Yeah, because I want to see some agreement here.
We're working on it.
Yeah, okay. Maria?
I, I think it's been answered, but Ted, are you concerned with like, say, saying WC1, if it ends up being mostly residential and say it's more cars per household that you're projecting? Is that what you mean, like something like it could be, you could be getting to a threshold quicker because, you know, everything is based on a hypothetical and then if, if the area turns out to be different, is that, is that what you're concerned about?
Well, they're all projections, that there's an overall projection for that given area. And that's based on the traffic volumes and projections and so on. And then there's the density, which is, you know, very general categories of civic, commercial, residential. But within those categories, and we don't know this because we don't have a, a strong concept plan that says that, you know, that this is where the single-family's homes are going. So there's a difference between single-family homes and what they generate in terms of trips and what you get from apartment buildings.
So there's a lot of variables.
There's a difference between a church and a YMCA, if we're talking about civic uses. There's a difference between a CVS and a real estate office. We don't know that, and that, we won't know that until we get to the site plan. That's where we get into the specific trip generations. But again, that cumulative generation gets to that threshold.
Okay.
And that's all we're saying is that we're all for the flexibility in terms of the mix of uses. We encourage mixed uses, we want to ensure there's mixed use. However, there is that upper limit. And that upper limit could be reexamined when we get close to it, but it should be recognized and should be, I think, or we think, or Jane thinks, integrated into, into the overall table.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
A couple other quick things. Block types. We, we feel that the block types are a little bit too large. And our concern basically is that with large block types, you tend to induce higher speeds. They're not quite as pedestrian-friendly, they don't necessarily make good walkable districts. And, you know, if you're talking about traditional New England village centers and neighborhoods, you're talking about smaller blocks, you know. Manchester, which is a larger city, obviously, they have 240 by 400 and 500-foot blocks. These are, these are larger, and they don't necessarily reflect a traditional village center pattern. So, and again, it may be fine, I mean, there's, you know, if they, if they're well-designed and the, and the streets, if they're coupled with are fairly narrow, but I'm just, we're just pointing out that with longer block faces and if they're coupled with wider streets, you tend to get higher traffic and not such, not such an inviting pedestrian environment. We, we've had many internal discussions about this.
Discussions on the block sizes.
So we may or may, we may have to agree to disagree, but I'm just pointing out that, but our concern is that the block sizes are a little too large and should be scaled back. I think that there... that there are certainly areas where they'll need to be bigger in certain cases, but I think that the basic block type should be smaller, and we make exceptions for particular areas where there's a need to be bigger.
How much smaller?
Well, for example, the village center block is 600 by 600. I think it shouldn't be any more than 400 by 400. I think 600 is a pretty long block.
I'm not knowledgeable on blocks, so.
No, I am. So, I'll say that we do, of course, disagree, which is why we have the 600 by 600 block in there, but we do, we understand the underlying concern, which is pedestrian safety and walkability. And under pages 112 to 113, under block types, we have standards related to speed management, mid-block crossings, and the ability to ensure that pedestrians are in a comfortable, walkable environment.
Any input from the board?
We're just pointing out. I mean, if the board's comfortable with larger blocks, that's fine. We're just pointing out that.
Yeah, I think the overriding thing is pedestrian safety, traffic speed, and everything, which is controlled by the width, the road width.
I'll give you an example. If you've been to Salt, Tom and I have been to Salt Lake City lately, Ontario's do. Those are 600 by 600 blocks. They're coupled with wide streets, you know, what might be the biggest avenue in this, you know, hierarchy of street types. It's the only place I've seen in the country where they actually, at the intersections and mid-block, they have flags at the pedestrian crossings, big orange flags that you're supposed to wave as you cross the street because they're so.
So, you drop them on the other side for the other person?
Right. I've never seen it anywhere else. Now, that may be an exaggerated example, but they are 600 by 600.
Streets are 120 feet wide.
And they're coupled with big streets. And the point is really that, you know, in traditional New England towns, they tend to be much smaller than what's proposed in this project.
Okay.
May I just ask?
Yes.
What, why would you want to have such a large block? I'm picturing some of the towns that I have been in that have a village square kind of thing. I grew up in one. And I'll admit, I have a very difficult time envisioning how much 600 feet is compared to 400. But you feel very strongly that you should have the flexibility to have the large blocks? I'm just wondering why.
Because you've got to write a code that is based on not just the smallest block size, but accommodates all sorts of different uses. For instance, I think the recommendation was for a 350 by 350-foot block in one of the HSH. And if you start looking at a standard retail module, which is 100 feet deep, and you add the sidewalk in front of it at 18, and you surface park that behind it, and then you put another use on the other side with its parking, you've exceeded that 350-foot depth. So, you look at the uses that are on the block, and you accommodate what's in there. So, we're not saying that every block that we're putting in here is going to be 600 by 600. We agree that that's a big block size, but we are saying that that is a block dimension that is standard form-based code language. 2,400 feet around the perimeter is what we've got in there, and that accommodates a variety of uses and options. So, you know, it's a.
But the intent is to have a variety of block sizes, but this being the code essentially by which you'll judge them, we have to put in what the largest possible block would be, and that would be the 600 by 600. But as Tom said, the intent is not to have every single block be 600 by 600.
So, there can be flexibility, and if, let's say, at site plan stage, we think the 600 by 600 is a little too big for that.
Subdivision and site plan.
Where it's going to get used, we can.
And as a point of reference, that's what, four houses on Gilchrist? I mean, it sounds big when you look at it like that, but you have to look at it at the subdivision and site plan level to really judge.
We did actually go through an exercise with both Cynthia and Ted whereby we were going to various parts of New England and measuring the blocks on Google Earth. And it is surprising how large a block is when you look at it. We were surprised to see some of the block perimeters. And so, we actually had quite a lot of discussion on this to make sure. And the overriding, as I said, the overriding concern became pedestrian safety and pedestrian comfort in terms of walkability.
And the other thing is, when you start to put the automobile behind the uses, and you start to look at some of the quaint New England towns, they were laid out in the times of horse and buggy, and don't have parking behind buildings and things like that, so.
I could do a long-winded response to everything that was just said, but I think we'd be wasting time. We just don't agree at all on the block sizes, so.
But there is flexibility on block sizes that we can.
Well, they could really do less than the maximum block sizes.
Yeah, the 600 by 600 is maximum.
I will provide you with a lot of information, so we'll be going forward, so when you get to the site plan process, you can really clearly understand.
Yeah, because that's where we get, to me, the nitty-gritty detail of how you do the arrangement of it.
There's a series of intersection improvements that our traffic engineers had recommended that should be integrated into the plan. This is something, again, we can work out with staff and with the development team. We don't need to get into the details of that right now. The only other issue or question that we had was the parking standards. Frankly, we're a little confused by the parking standards. The table is, it's pretty wide open, and what we're suggesting is basically that the table of parking requirements, the number of spaces required for given uses should probably be based on the current standards, however, that there are a series of potential reductions or offsets that can happen, given the specific circumstances of a subdivision or a site plan. So, for example, if, and we would, to the first degree, we think your parking standards are way too high. However, you know, if you consider reduction methods such as the availability and proximity of on-street parking, public parking, or private parking, satellite parking that could be used for employees, internal access between parking lots, shared access, shared use, mixed use, which has off-peak hour, peak hour demands, there's a whole multitude of different offset factors that could be put in place. And I'm sure Rick has written several times, as we have, in putting together parking standards, that can essentially get you down to nothing if that is, you know, if it's beneficial to have no parking on a particular site. So, I think we start with something we're all familiar with, and we give the opportunity to really reduce it to a significant level. And as far as the ULI Shared Parking Manual, we fully support that as a tool, but we think it's more appropriate to use that at the site plan level. So, if you're looking at a project that's got a mixed-use component in it, that's where that would come into play. It's very good at estimating the amount of parking that's necessary for a combination of uses on a site, not necessarily as part of an overall tape. And then finally, I would just say, we are also interested in the open space and wondering, first of all, we like the idea that there's a standard for proximity of open space to the door fronts of commercial or residential uses. We think that's a good idea, in a good way of sort of, you know, making sure that there's a relationship. However, it's unclear to us what is considered to be an active open space. And if it's just simply shared open space, shared open space can be, you know, any kind of land. I mean, it really just, it's publicly accessible, but doesn't necessarily has public attributes or amenities. So, I think that there should be some higher level of quality assured that, you know, within a certain distance of door fronts, or door fronts, that active open spaces or some specific improved open space be available, whether it's a trail system, whether it's a park, whether it's a ball field. I think that that should be more specific. Because in some cases, and it's pointed out today, like in WC12, you know, the conserve green space is really sort of wrapping around those natural constraints, you know, those wetlands, the steep slopes, that, you know, the, you know, those type of areas. And then the shared open space is just sort of another buffer around those. Very little, actually, you know, usable improved open space in that area. So, we want to make sure that there's a direct connection between quality open space and door fronts.
I'm taking notes. Something we can look at also, and certainly we can send our comments to Cynthia. Any else? No, okay. Got our minds moving. Okay, what we've got to do, the board doesn't have anything else, is go to the public, the public input on the master plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Have we received any correspondence from, that has been requested that, from the public, that be read into the record? It does not be appropriate to do that now?
Right, we're going to do that at the very beginning. One is if Mike spells, Mike is here, so Mike will handle that.
Why are we out of respect? There's people here that are waiting. We'll hear from them first, and we can read the letters into the record.
Okay, okay. I'd like to go to the, handle the public.
Yeah, before we do that, can I just, it was bothering me when you were talking about city blocks and just trying to get a grasp on size. And I just did, I just quickly looked up, your standard city block is between a tenth and a twelfth of a mile. That equates to about 440 or 528 feet. That's typical in downtown New York, downtown Boston. Now, where I moved from in Chicago, where they're a little bit more spread out, they're 660 feet. So, what he's saying, you know, and I'm hearing you saying 600 feet, that's a long block.
That's why we've provided the mid-block crossing requirement in the block standards to, so because, again, part of the idea was pedestrian safety. You don't want people saying, as they walk along the commercial district, oh, that's the store I want to going over there, I'm just going to cross in the middle of the street. So, we've provided the mid-block crossing. We have provided, one of the other problems that Ted brought up is the increased perception that you'd be allowed to speed on a long block because you don't have an intersection coming up. It's why we provided those standards to prevent that.
Cynthia?
Just to clarify this whole exercise a little bit, what we'd asked the team to do is to take a look at the information plan, and it's not that all the blocks are within the realm of the 2,400 perimeter or the 600, whatever those numbers are, but that there are instances where that's applicable. And so, it's giving you the maximum, not the standard, and I think you have to think of it that way.
Yeah, because I mean, it is maximum. Okay, anyone have any questions or comments? And this just deals with the master plan itself, that is dated August 2013. And come to the microphone and please, and name an address, please. And Mike, you already emailed me today, right here, that little thing sticking up. Or you could draw a chair up and sit.
Yeah.
Why don't you do that? That's easier, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have a prepared statement. I don't know if you want me to hand it out first, or what?
Yeah, why don't you hand it out first, please?
Okay.
Mike, you can just give a bunch, and we'll pass on.
Yeah, we can, we can do it.
Mike, can we use, I assume the extras are for the public? Anybody who might want them?
Whoever wants them, yeah. Members of the press preferred, if there are any.
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike Brown, Five Carousel Court. I'd like to thank the chair and the members of the planning board for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. It's greatly appreciated. I am respectfully requesting that the comments that I have for tonight be included in the public record for the hearing, as well as a copy made, part of the record of the application going forward. I think that's probably standard stuff. I do want to apologize in advance if any of the topics I'm covering tonight are redundant for your previous two hearings, but I think the start of the meeting actually lends itself well to my comments. For the first part, I do want to call the board's attention to some pertinent references from our existing zoning ordinance, which I think you're all familiar with, based on what was discussed earlier tonight. But more importantly, in my personal opinion, I think they should be an integral part of all the hearings and discussions for this project going forward. And I'm glad that they were actually on the docket for this evening. And that's, these sections are directly related to helping our community properly plan for and mitigate against infrastructure-related costs from future residential development projects. The first section being residential development phasing, the second one being growth management. Both of these sections can be found in our current zoning ordinance, as you well know, on pages 14 through 20. In summary, both of these sections are zoning and planning tools, and that's the important adjective here, the word is "tools," that were expressly enabled to us by the legislature of the state of New Hampshire under RSA 67421 and 67422, respectively. And the legislature provided these tools so that communities like Lunnderry would have access to appropriate safety valves against the costs of future residential development projects, regardless of their location, regardless of their size, and regardless of the type of project that comes before you. It's not unique to any one application, including the one tonight, okay? That was the intent of the legislation and our legislatures. And the spirit and intent of these tools is clearly defined, as such, in our sections of the zoning ordinance. In essence, both of these ordinances are expressly designed to help the town monitor, evaluate, and plan for residential growth that is consistent with our capacity for handling the services and accommodate such development. And this is including but not limited to education, fire, roads, waste disposal, police protection, recreation. More importantly, these two ordinances are grounded upon the correlation they have between our current master plan and our current capital improvement plans. As a former counselor and planning board member and zoning board member, I can personally attest to the fact that these two ordinances have been very effective, and that they work in concert with each other, and that's the important piece here, is these are not mutually exclusive sections. As the chairman knows, because he was actively involved in the creation of both of these ordinances, they work in tandem, and that's the key piece that I don't want missed here this evening. And they allow us to accurately forecast the maximum amount of residential development that the town can expect and will need to plan for on a year-over-year basis. In effect, the combination is the ultimate planning tool, our crystal ball. And it's not a real one, but it's close. And we have that right now in our control, in our grasp for all development projects. When the PUD was brought before the council that I was a sitting member of for adoption of this ordinance, and for the sake of full disclosure, I voted in the affirmative on putting this ordinance on the books. I specifically asked the town's planning staff at that time if subsequent PUD projects, predating Woodmont, obviously, would be subject to both residential phasing and GMO like any other zoning district. The answer was yes, as it should have been, because that's true, okay? I also asked the same question again at subsequent Woodmont-related workshops here held at the planning board, and again, the answer from staff was yes. I also attended a public meeting workshop that the town council themselves held, I believe. believe last year, if my memory still serves me well, where they were seeking public input on infrastructure needs and potential related impacts the Woodmont project might entail. And again, I asked that question, and again, the answer was yes. So I'm not a lawyer, I have no legal training or background, but it's my personal understanding that there's no legal requirement that would require the planning board to either waive or exempt any development project from either of these two sections. Okay? Absent a variance from our zoning board. While this applicant or any other before you certainly has the right, they absolutely do, to request a waiver and exemption from one or both of these sections as part of their application, it's solely in your purview to decide whether or not to grant such requests. Speaking as one member of the community, I believe personally, it's critical that the planning board come to a consensus as early in this process as possible that these two sections of our zoning ordinance should remain in full effect as part of the PUD master plan approved for Woodmont. A project of this size, scale, and length of development time, the largest ever, unique, an exception to the norm, requires nothing short of that. To do so otherwise, in my personal opinion, would be poor planning on our part and a disservice to our collective constituents, the residents and taxpayers of Lunen Derry. I'm urging the planning board to take this matter up in full discussion in as short of order as possible, come to a formal decision, and provide that feedback to this applicant. Doing so, in my opinion, would greatly assist in setting the proper expectations for all concerned going forward, the applicant and the community at large. In other words, I don't believe this should be delayed. This discussion should come to fruition and closure as soon as possible. I have similar concerns regarding the applicant's request to eliminate all conditional use permits from the master plan and the request to completely bypass the town's duly-appointed ZBA for variances and special exceptions. In effect, requesting the town give up two more significant spheres of our own control, I couldn't more strongly disagree with that, and I recommend the planning board not agree to that request either. The ZBA exists here by state statute and our own town charter. And the town charter says, there shall be a planning board and there shall be a zoning board. Don't eliminate one of your own boards with this master plan. Do not do that. I want to thank you for the opportunity that I had to speak this evening. I want to thank you for your service to the town. I know what it's like. It's not easy. And I appreciate what you're doing greatly. I'm concluding my comments, Mr. Chair. If the board or you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mike. Appreciate the input. We've crafted, well, our attorney or attorneys have worked along with our town council for a development agreement. And the development agreement spells out a number of these things. We've not fully discussed phasing, but as far as growth management, what we're looking at is that at all stages of the development of the PUD, that it remain tax positive. So therefore, it'll bring in more money than it consumes. And this is the intent, the growth management ordinance is to limit residential growth for, as the statute specifies, it's just for a period of time. It's not designed to be permanent or anything. So all the growth management ordinance has done is to allow us to grow at a slower pace where we can keep up with the infrastructure and everything. So the way the development agreement is worded is that as the PUD develops, it always has to remain as a tax-positive state, so it's not a burden on the taxpayers. And that's the basic premise of the GMO. But the other part of it is that allows us to be tax-positive is the development of the commercial and industrial growth.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm a bit confused. I'm talking about the PUD itself. You're talking about a separate document that's now?
It's part of the master, master plan. It's, it kind of governs the whole process.
The development agreement?
Development agreement and the master plan work in concert with each other. The development agreement is what's, the planning board only will make a recommendation to the town council, the town council will adopt the development agreement.
Okay.
It's been on our website, I think since the 18th.
Okay.
18th of, 18th, 19th of August, that timeframe.
All right.
It's something that we spent last week with our own, not town council, but our attorney going through and.
So the planning board has come to a consensus on waiving phasing and GMO?
Does, yes. Yes, that's what's, that's what's occurred.
I don't think that's accurate.
We're going to talk about this after we get through.
My question's pretty black and white.
Well, then let me give one, one answer is, there's been some discussion about it, but essentially from our lawyers, we have learned that GMO, which has a sunset provision in 2015.
I'm well aware of that.
Okay. And since their application is in before 2015, when it expires, it will not have an effect That's under the PUD.
I'm not a lawyer. I don't understand how those dots connect. It's, it's in effect now, and it expires.
And it expires in 2015, and if the, from what we understand, the applicable law is that that's, they're under the laws as in effect of a certain date, which I think is March 1st, 2013. I mean, no, that's wrong, that's a different date. They're under the law as of, as of the time they filed their application. And the law then is that the GMO expires in 2015.
But there's also a comma in the following sentence that, until it's reenacted. And I'm assuming the planning board and the planning staff's well aware of this date, and they're in the process of reenacting it.
That's not what, that's not what we've been told.
So I think though, Tom, what it says is that in the development agreement, the developer agrees that they will be, follow under the rules of the GMO, because that was what was in effect when this application was given. So in, if we agree that we are going to recommend the development agreement, development agreement has the provision of the GMO in it.
But Mike, one of the, one of the main things that we put in the development agreement is the requirement that their development be tax-positive, not only at the end of 20 years, but every year. And to the extent that they build and they're not tax-positive, they can't build or they have to compensate the town to make up the shortfall, which essentially is the goal of the GMO.
That's not, well, I was one of the individuals who helped craft the GMO with art at several public hearings, and it was to limit the absolute number, the math, of residential units, not the tax-positive or negative nature.
Well, I don't agree with that. I think what it was, was frankly.
I assumed you wouldn't agree with me.
Well, Mike, you know.
Yeah, the spirit and intent of the GMO is just to slow down growth till the town catches up its infrastructure.
Is to put an absolute cap on residential units, huh?
Yes. Yes.
Right. Well, we're stuck with the PUD that you, you put in, Mike.
I think my comments said that directly.
Yeah.
Yes.
We already discussed that part of it.
You want to go down that road, fine.
I included that in my comments on purpose.
I made that comment on purpose, too.
So is, one last question. Is phasing exempted in the, in the development agreement?
If, if they have to fall within the GMO because?
It's two separate ordinances.
Right. Phasing will be a natural order of them keeping the project tax-positive.
They're asking a waiver from section 133, which limits the number of units they can build. Is the planning board waiving that in the development agreement?
No.
No.
So they are limited.
Yes.
To as little as 15 units per, dwelling units per year, to a maximum of 48 development units per year. That's 133.
Well, you know, when you.
They're requesting a waiver.
They're requesting waivers, but alternative.
Correct. And I'm asking if you're agreeing to the waiver.
But additionally, they have the ability to get around it than anybody else has the ability to get around it. It's not as ironclad as you think it is.
I must be missing something. They're asking your permission to be waived from that specific section. I'm recommending you don't do that.
In the developer's agreement, there's no waiver. So if they want to ask at various times, I guess they can ask.
No, they're asking in the master plan, and I'm asking you not to approve the master plan as it currently exists with the waiver in it. That's what I'm asking. I was doing the same thing with GMO, but it looks like that's gone down a different path.
On page 46, just in case you're busy looking. Right. No, I understand that it's on page 46, but.
It's the second waiver. It's very clear.
But the, the problem with the, the way the waivers are written in here and the development agreement is that they don't agree. So what has to happen, I think, is that internally, they have to understand they are either going to take these out or the development agreement has to change. And since we're kind of wanting the development agreement to include those things, this is what's got to change. So as it is right now, they're asking for a, in a continuance until September 11th. They're not asking for us to approve or disapprove this tonight.
So far, no, no decisions.
Okay. So we are absolutely taking that into consideration, but by them agreeing with what we have in the development agreement, they're in effect saying, these waivers are moot because it's covered by the development agreement. Isn't that correct?
I'm not sure that's true with regard to the phasing waiver.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we've really discussed thoroughly the phasing anyway.
Well, I had asked about the phasing earlier.
Yes, yeah.
In this session.
And I think it's definitely, we're going to take that under advisement at this point anyway, so.
Yeah. I, I know I'm beating a dead horse. I'm asking you to take it further than under advisement and not grant that waiver. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next. Mike. Mike, second. No, no, no.
He means you're the second Mike.
Mike Speltz.
To come to the microphone. Mike.
We've been to 19 yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mike Speltz, 18 Sugar Plum Lane. I too have a prepared statement, and it's prepared because I didn't think I was going to be here tonight, but as you noted earlier, I, I am, unfortunately. I thought I'd be on vacation.
I was prepared to read your letter, but we'll let you do that.
All right, thank you. Before I, I go into the letter itself, I wanted to just take a few quick notes on the, some of the things you discussed already. I don't think that being tax-positive is the same as providing adequate infrastructure. So we could, we could very well have a development that stays tax-positive throughout the years, but it could still generate demands on town services that, that, that we have difficulty meeting. You know, we get a large influx of.
But that's, that's what's the understood part of it, Mike, because they have to meet infrastructure requirements and everything. And meeting the infrastructure requirements, they have to keep us in a tax-positive situation.
Right, but they could bring in a lot of commercial development that we could tax, and it would, it'd more than pay for the services that are being provided, especially to the residential units. But that doesn't mean that the school is there, or the fire truck is there, or the police car is there. And I realize that development agreement is going to come into play here, but that, but it's, they, they aren't the same. You can be tax-positive and yet lack infrastructure, and that is what the growth management ordinance helped, helped to protect us from.
Not entirely. Not entirely.
Well, it's, it doesn't, I would agree with Mike that it's, it's something we should not throw out.
Can you give an example of some infrastructure costs that's not going to, that is, as you said, going to be different than being tax-positive?
Right.
What else are we going to have to build that's not going to be budgeted and therefore be tax-negative?
No, I'm not saying that it would be tax-negative, but let's say to build a school is usually a, what, four or five-year process from initial engineering to, you know, town votes and actual construction? You could get an influx of school-aged children that are, you know, the, the cost of that, even if we had to, I guess, tuition them out to dairy or something, you know, might be covered by taxes that are coming in from the development, but we, we just couldn't get that school built fast enough. That's, that would be an example. Yes, we'll assess an impact fee, and we'll go through the process, we'll, you know, help that to pay off a school bond or whatever, but.
Hopefully, our, our budgeting process is accurate enough to take into account what's, what's happening.
Right. But all, all the GMO and the phasing do is give you an insurance policy that, that in fact will, will happen that way.
Yeah, I mean, it just slows, really what it does is slows things down, so you can catch up with the infrastructure.
Right. Right. That's my point. So why would you want to throw that?
So, I mean, at that point, because we're in a very tax-negative situation back in the 80s, where we're granting over 400, you know, single-family housing building permits per year. That's what prompted all this stuff in the late 80s.
I think the board would be in a position to say no to a development that this high plan that comes before us that would add a certain number of students to our school, into our town if the, if the school wasn't already built or wasn't going to be built by the time those houses were built.
Well, that's a question our town council, it's not clear to me that you'd have the authority to do that if they, if they met with all the other guidelines that are in the PUD master plan and the, and the development agreement. It's not clear to me if they, that, that you could then, you would have the authority to do that. They've done everything that they promised to do.
Except be tax-positive every year. I mean, if that's your criteria, that's the last thing that they have to be, is tax-positive every year.
But I think what Mike is saying is that they could be tax-positive by throwing money at the town to send those kids to another school outside of our district. And that would, you know, we, we wouldn't have the building, we would still be tax-positive, but, you know, we would be overburdening our town, but still they're getting away with it. So, you know, I, I'd like our town council, our town attorney, to respond to that, because we, these are the questions that we did have, and we kind of, we were satisfied back in the other room, and I don't know.
We're not really, we haven't talked about the development.
Yeah.
I feel like we've all talked about it, they don't know about it yet. And it makes it very hard to try that unless we start reading the development.
Yeah.
It makes it hard for people to understand why we have a level of comfort with some of this stuff.
Let's just keep to the master plan right, right, right now.
It is, it is the case.
Even though they are intertwined, but we'll get in the development agreement after input on the master plan.
Mr. Chairman, it is the case that you will have to approve these two documents at the same time, since they're so, one depends on the other. Is that correct?
Well, the development agreement is actually approved by the town council.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, I write it, I'm recommending.
We make a recommendation. It's just like a zoning ordinance. We make a recommendation, it's up to the town council to agree or disagree, or send it back and make changes.
But, but the question I'm asking is, will you make that recommendation and approve the master plan at the same time?
We could do them separately, but they'd have to be contingent upon each other as a condition of approval.
All right, fair enough. I wanted also, just a technical question. In, I think it was November when we had the first draft of the master plan, it was circulated to design review committee, and this time it wasn't. And I'm wondering if there's an intention to do that.
Design review committee, master plan.
You know, heritage commission, conservation commission, fire, police, all of the members of the design, DRCs.
No, not to my, no. I don't know if they were distributed master plan back then or not, I don't know.
They were.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if it was Cynthia or predecessor who assembled the comments, but they are there.
But, but we're here to take. But, but we're here to take comments anyway, so.
Well, I mean, what if someone on the heritage commission, you know, had a worthwhile comment? I mean, it seems to me that we, we should not depart from our common practice of sending all proposals to the design review committee.
That's only for-
Site and subdivision plans.
Site plans and subdivision plans that go through the design review committee.
Well, I realize there's no precedent either way.
So, yes, that's probably, probably why, because site plans and subdivisions go through all the boards and committees and everything, and they're all part of the design review committee that has input on the plan before it gets to the planning board.
And the first draft of the PUD master plan also went to the design review committee.
Okay.
In the November.
I wasn't aware of that, so.
So the answer is no.
Far as, uh, not to my knowledge, but it has been in public circulation, and it's been on our website, and it is a public document.
One, one final bit of factual information. Cynthia said earlier that, that state law requires there to be a, a, no, no increase in, in stormwater flow off, off-site of a development. And in fact, that's even, you can go and be out and say, "No cumulative increase now." However, that is not true of the, the master plan. That's true of individual site plans, that the DES gets involved and approved. The DES isn't going to be involved in this master plan. And the, the commitment that I believe the developer made, which is an extremely important commitment, is that, taken as a whole, the entire Woodmont Commons development will not increase the rate of flow off of it, or the cumulative rate of flow off of it. And the reason that's important is, look, if you just look at Brookview Drive, that only started flooding after places upstream started adding impervious surface. But once Brookview Drive was approved, when the Nevins was approved, or this development is approved, or the Development Island was approved, those all were looked at through the straw narrowly at that site plan. That's what the state administers. The state does not administer this, this broad six-hundred-acre area. It doesn't have any requirements for the stormwater management of it. That's why it was so important that the developer offered to make that commitment, and that's why it should be in the, the PUD master plan. I make myself clear.
It's a matter of public record also that that was, that was made.
So I, I think it's, it would be a worthwhile addition to the, to the master plan.
Okay.
And then finally, just by way of preface, I, I want to endorse all of the comments that Ted made. I, I think they are all vitally important to you exercising your good judgment and, and making this plan work for Londonderry. And in particular, that you add either a line to the table or a separate table that sort of moves outside the box of thinking we can control this by limiting the, the, the types of land uses in a subarea, and admit that one of the key limits that we need to put on the subareas is the traffic. And I think it sounds like we're all in agreement. Therefore, I'm surprised that there's any resistance to, to just adding that line in the land use table. So I urge you to, to follow his suggestions. I'm going to skip the first couple of paragraphs of my letter because Mike Brown really hit this point very well, and, and the, the, the goal is, I think, that the PUD is governed by our existing zoning ordinance, subdivision plan, and site plan, except where the PUD supersedes it. And in the PUD, we should have, for everything that's being waived, a pointer as to what's going to replace it and why it's necessary. You know, one example is setbacks. You know, we have sort of cookie cutter, cookie cutter setbacks in our subdivision regs. And this more complicated development rightfully throws those out and replaces them with some very specific ones to very specific types of development. That's good. But, as another example, they ask that the conditional use permits be waived and the entire conservation overlay district be waived. That's not a good idea. They don't explain why, and they don't offer any alternative way of protecting the wetlands and streams that are on the property. So, you know, and, and those are only two examples. You know, there are a lot of waivers that are being asked for in here, things that they're going to ignore without adequate justification, and more importantly, without an adequate replacement provision, whatever that might be. And now I'm going to go ahead and, with your kind permission, read the rest of my letter into the record, because I think I can do it more concisely than just by speaking and get us out of here.
Okay.
And, and this, these last remarks have to do with deciding on appropriate density. Beyond the technical details of the proposal, the common theme expressed in many public comments is whether such intensive and dense development is appropriate for Londonderry. Will it diminish the quality of life in a community largely set among orchards and woods if one looks past the strip malls? On the other hand, Woodmont Commons has the potential to provide another more urban lifestyle choice. Its density increases the likelihood, but does not guarantee that the project as a whole will be tax positive. Where can the planning board look for guidance to navigate between these two extremes? The PUD ordinance provides five general considerations and fifteen specific objectives to guide the board in judging, quote, "appropriate land uses, densities, and other development standards." And that's in section two point eight point eight. The board may find that making a judgment on each of these criteria would be a systematic way to proceed. Departing here, you've got a terribly complicated decision to make here, and, and one way perhaps to tackle this is to take advantage of those five general considerations, those fifteen specific objectives, and hold the PUD master plan up to each of those eighteen items and say, "Does this make the grade, or does it not?" And then you'll have a basis for either approving, disapproving, or putting conditions, which are the, the three choices that you have. I believe the proposed development fails short, falls short on at least the following criteria. And I'll just give the last two digits. Two point one, inclusion of a harmonious mix of uses, in that the proposed uses are almost entirely residential and commercial, with no provision for public facilities. And I have to say, I wrote this two weeks ago before I went on my eligibility case, and I know now that there are some public facilities being proposed. No specific proposed agricultural use and very limited provision of outdoor recreation space outside of wetlands, a point that Ted made earlier. Two point four, preservation of open space, in that the proposed open space is almost entirely undevelopable land located on either, either on the east side of I- ninety-three or in the existing large wetland known locally as the Duck Pond, a point that Lynn made earlier. Point, two point five, preservation of natural vegetation and other important natural features, in that the most important natural feature of the site, the prime agricultural soils, will be largely lost. Two point six, development of active or passive recreational areas, in that the provision of space for passive outdoor recreation on dry ground is extremely limited, again, a point that Ted made. Two point twelve, sustainable design and construction practices promoting energy conservation, in that the plan does not address, much less incentivize, subsequent development of individual structures to conserve energy. Two years ago, Andres Dooney, in a series of public informational meetings held in the Woodmont Apple Storage Facility, introduced us to the new urbanism and its conceptual implementation on the six-hundred acres comprising Woodmont Commons. In fact, Andres Dooney both literally and figuratively wrote the books on the new urbanism, making copies of the Smart Growth Manual available at the public meetings. And I have one that he gave me, and unfortunately, I forgot to bring it tonight to remind you what it looks like. Mr. Dooney is also a key contributor to the SMART code, a model zoning ordinance that creates a legal framework to guide new urbanism development. Our town master plan is filled with the concepts and even the vocabulary of Mr. Dooney's work. The same can be said of much, but not all, of the proposed PUD master plan. New urbanism is built on two fundamental concepts, the rural-urban transect and neighborhoods based on pedestrian sheds. The rural-urban transect describes the continuum of land uses ranging from wilderness to the urban core. In our town master plan, these are called character zones. They describe the types of development that should occur or not occur in a given area, called a sector in planners', in planners' jargon. The key point is that each sector should have a mix of development types. A neighborhood is based on how far a person can walk in five minutes, about one-quarter of a mile, and this harkens back against one of Ted's comments. This is called a pedestrian shed, because like a watershed, it maps where people flow from the edges to the center, which might be a village center, commercial area, or transit stop. The key point is that neighborhoods are the building blocks, and each should include a center or focal point and several, several of the development types on the rural-urban transect. The problem that we in Londonderry have right now is agreeing on how much of Woodmont Commons should fall on which part of the rural-urban transect. How much should preserve what Dooney calls legacy farmland? How much should be cluster development surrounded by open space? How much should be traditional dense neighborhoods surrounded by open space? And how much should be a regional center built around I- ninety-three and mass transit? The Woodmont Commons subareas appear to serve as neighborhoods, so another way to ask the question is, which of the subareas, WC one through WC twelve, should fall into which type of development? Our town master plan places Woodmont Commons in the intended growth sector. In the SMART code, Dooney and his colleagues advise for this sector a mix of traditional compact neighborhoods and regional center types of development that include elements on the rural-urban transect ranging from suburban to urban core. However, our town master plan also states, and I quote, "In all sectors, the town should work proactively to permanently protect open spaces that are identified in the 2010-2011 Open Space Plan and maintain the rural character of the town," close quotes. The current proposal provides a limited mix of development types across the six-hundred acres of Woodmont Commons, but to comply with the guidance in the master plan and to confirm and conform to the standards established by their own consultant and his colleagues. Woodmont Commons should go further in buffering the urban core proposed for subarea WC one with more open space among the densely developed neighborhoods, subareas, and in particular, should use the added open space to preserve and make available to its residents the extremely valuable agricultural soils on the property. In short, the mix in this mixed-use development should be broadened to include cluster neighborhoods of less intense development in accordance with nationally accepted standards for smart growth. I thank you and the planning board members for the opportunity to point out a middle ground between maximizing the market value of the development and maximizing our remaining natural resources. And I have comments on the development agreement. We'll want to talk about those later. Is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'll just get input on the master plan, and then we'll, we'll go right into the development agreement, so. Anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns in regards to the master plan?
May I ask a quick follow-up question to both Mike's question?
Yes.
I'm really sorry. I, I'm, I'm so, I'm left very more confused about the growth management ordinance after the answer that they got. And I don't know how they feel about the answer that they got. But if I could, my impression from our discussion was that what's in effect now is in effect for this plan unless they're asking for a waiver.
Yes.
And that the discussion about the sunsetting of the growth management ordinance means that, for all intents and purposes, it's not going to apply to a lot of the twenty years of this being built. However, we didn't have a discussion about whether that will be renewed. All we did was say, "It's in effect now. They're not asking for a waiver for the GMO," and it happens to sunset in a year and a half or so. Am I correct on those points? And if not, please correct me.
Because we, we, when we, we did discuss, some of it is covered in the, you know, the development agreement, which, right now, I'm not sure at all that the concerns that were raised. I think that's what we're going to have to probably confer with our council when we meet again to determine what.
I think what we were told was that when this sunsetting comes in 2015, it will no longer apply to them regardless if the then-town council extends it for another five years or whatever the period of time is. At least, that was my understanding of what we were told.
I just don't see a specific reference to the GMO in either develop, the development agreement or the master plan. Only a comment in the, I know we aren't there yet, but only a comment in the developer's agreement that says that the law's in effect at the time that this, of the approval would be in effect for the development.
I think when we get to the development agreement, we can probably-
Okay. As long, I just, I don't feel like that question was answered. I just want to make sure it gets entered a little better when we can.
Yeah, because it's not quite definite and clear and everything, so I think that's what we have to be. Marty?
Martin Shugus, seventeen Wimbledon Drive. When you started talking about the growth management organizations, ordinances, you kind of woke me up back here. And I'm concerned about it. I'm not against the development per se, but I am worried about the impact it has on the rest of Londonderry. I came in on the, what I consider the third wave of people moving into town in the early nineties, and I remember the intersections being overloaded and people playing Russian roulette trying to get out into the street and turn. And I'm concerned that this impact from Woodmont may have the same effect on the town, on Pillsbury and other areas. And I think Mike brought up a good point also about the schools, police, fire. I think they're already planning on it. I think they talked about this a couple of years ago, about their ten-year plans on how they need another fire station possibly in Woodmont, a police substation. And I'm always worried about that they're going to be spending tax money or bond money ahead of when the revenue's coming in. And hopefully, the revenues come in. And, and, and that's why I'm very concerned about giving up the growth ordinances and just waiving them completely. I, I hope in this agreement, I didn't get a chance to read through this, and I just hope that the board does not give up that right to the developer and that it retains it. One of the concerns that I've always read in, in various papers and letters to the editor is that this is going to be a village onto itself with its own mayor and rules and regulations. And I think we have to be careful that you don't grant that and that it's part of the town, not a separate part of the town, and that it becomes integrated. So, other than that, I don't have much more and then, I kind of agree with Mike and Mike on what they say on some of these issues, but that's all I have at this point, because-
Because we're, we're looking at other ways of controlling the impacts. We've had the whole traffic study.
Like I said, I hope you have enough, it's strong enough so that it does control that and that you just don't give it up too easily.
Right, and that, that's one of our concerns, is, is really having the, the control, and it's really the impacts and the influence on the community. I mean, it is kind of like its own community, but also has, it's a relationship to Londonderry.
Well, the concern I have here is, we were talking about, what's the minimum and the maximum amount of, of building to have? I mean, we had the growth ordinances on the apartments of forty-eight per year. Is, you know, where is it now? Is it unlimited? Is it, you know, is it fifty, a hundred? What is it?
It's, it's still there.
It's still up to forty-eight and I forgot the detail about the-
Within the PUD?
Yes.
Okay, I have to go back and-
You know, I know there was a, a certain amount for single-family homes, for multi-town houses, I guess.
Right, but because we're not, isn't it true that because we're not in a period of unsustainable growth, there is no limit on the number of housing permits that can be given right now?
There hasn't been a limit for about five years.
The only thing that limits, we, we have limits on the size of buildings right now.
Yeah, but we gave that away. Why are we going?
And we do have phasing as well, right. But we, we have an unlimited number of permits that we can issue because we are not in a-
Right.
Sustainable.
I understand.
Sustainable growth.
So, given all the other developments that are happening in town, would they be added to this so that if we reach that limit, then it would stop?
The limit is only reached when you're comparing us to other areas. There's three things that we have to meet. There's three levels that we have to meet in order for us to-
Yes, the consistency of, of growth with the surrounding communities, that's consistency of growth that is- of growth, that is what your normal rate of growth is. And then there's other factors of, relate with capacity, capacity of the school, capacity of your bonding and, you know.
Well, I know there's several, well, I know we have several adult communities being developed, but there's also the Lord and Estates out on, off of Exit 5 and a couple others that are, I think, on the books at this point. My concern is, when we add those apartments into this growth and we reach that, you know, unsustainable stuff, will that mean everybody will be limited to the permits, including Woodmont?
I think what's going to govern Woodmont is what we have in the development agreement, and this is what we're going to be discussing next. Because Woodmont is, you know, we're treating it as, it's.
Separate entity.
Entity and everything.
Okay, well, okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Maybe we can ask the applicant what their plans are as far as phasing and what they, what the maximum they think they're going to be building at any one time.
I mean, that's.
I think we've asked that question before, and they're not in a position to tell us.
We've been asked this a number of times. The answer we've been giving is the same one I'll give now, which is, we don't know what the demand will be within the PUD area. And what we've done to control and overbuild or a lack of infrastructure or any number of failures that could occur if the demand is allowed to proceed unchecked is to study the various ways in which we could become too fast, too large, too unmitigated. And we've come up with various mitigation strategies that will be rolled out at the planning board's site plan and subdivision inquiry, not the least of which is traffic, to make sure that the impacts that are controlled by these types of tools we're talking about are handled, at least for the PUD area. The one piece of the puzzle, I think, that might otherwise go unregulated would be the fiscal impact of the development as a whole, and that's the purpose of the development agreement's provisions relating to fiscal impacts. We've made the commitment to keep it positive. We've made the commitment not only to be ultimately positive, but to be positive on an annual basis as the development rolls forward year to year to year to year. And that is, I think, something very unique that we are providing because of the unique nature of the project. You know, we're being allowed to do something that is different than subdivisions and site plans, and we're therefore providing something different, which is a check on our drain of municipal services and the amount of revenue that we're providing.
And do you agree that phasing applies to your development?
I agree that the language in the ordinance applies to our development, which happens to be at the back of tonight's agenda, which I think states, I'd have to look for it quickly Proposed time schedule for completion of the project, phasing schedule if applicable depending on scale and type of PUD, plans for bonding if applicable, and well-thought-out plan to ensure that amenities will be completed as proposed in a timely manner. I don't, so, you know, that's pretty broad language that just, to me, says, let's think these things through. And I think the way we've answered those concerns is by studying the various ways that we could have unmitigated impacts and making sure that we at least have thought through the mitigation options so that they are on the table when we come forward with development proposals.
Thank you. I'm well set.
Okay. Anyone else on the master plan? Okay, Ann.
Ann Champa, 28, Wedgwood. Can I ask the definition of a block? And when we're talking about 600 feet, are we talking about the village center or neighborhoods?
The village center.
So, the definition of the block. Okay, not neighborhoods? Yeah. The definition of block is found in Section 2.1.5 definitions, and it's the aggregate of public frontage, private lots, and access lanes. And I think Ted already answered the second question, but we are talking about village blocks are the 600. Okay, village, not the neighborhoods. Village blocks, yeah. Reading it, it's larger. And I just want to say, I grew up in Manchester, like many other people grew up in larger towns, and we had our own little blocks. And my particular block was 10 houses long in Manchester, and that equated to definitely over 600 feet, because at the time, 50-foot was the maximum, was the minimum frontage for the residential area. Since, gone up to 75 feet minimum frontage in the residential district in Manchester. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to get it clear whether it was the village or the residential. It looks like it's, the residential ones can be up to 750 feet.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. One thing I was concerned about is the block sizes in relation to Hovey Road again, because when the, when the plan was first presented, I had, and I have it multiple times since, made mention of the 17 intersections on Hovey Road. And I hope no maximum amount of frontage will increase what could be a smaller, fewer intersections on Hovey Road. What I'm basically saying, I hope we can reduce the amount of intersections on Hovey Road, and it isn't as large as what it was originally presented to be, the amount of It looks like in the, in some of the other plans, it has been reduced, and I appreciate that. One thing I'm concerned about, again on Hovey Road, is Hovey Road right now is a straight road from the point where it takes a 90-degree turn on the southern portion of it. It goes straight up to the cemetery and beyond. In the plans here, there's, is a square right in the middle of the road. And I was, I'd like to know, as far as the planning board is concerned, their feelings on changing an existing road and putting in, I'll say, an encumbrance right in the middle of a currently straight road.
One, something like that slows down traffic.
Excuse me?
Slows down traffic. You don't get the traffic build up speeds.
But we have specific, you know, speed limits there as it is.
They're only good as enforcement, which even people in town complain. So what you look at are road, devices on roads to slow traffic down.
But that particular road and the particular area it's, it's placed in is around the cemetery, that area, that's what I'm talking about. And forcing residences, residents around there to make a series of, you know, 90-degree turns to continue on a path of a road that currently is straight. That's what I'm concerned about.
I think some of the roads, if you look at the traffic impact analysis, that gives you the detailed explanation of what occurs.
Yeah, I know, but they didn't study much of Hovey, north of Hovey at all.
But usually, long straight roads, as you build it up, you want to break it up so that you don't get the speeding traffic.
Yeah, but the, taking a look at Pillsbury, where there was originally an encumbrance right in the middle of Pillsbury, say, a little east of where the pond is, that was changed to make it a straight road for the Pillsbury Road. That encumbrance was taken out.
Yeah, that's more of a thoroughfare type of road, as explained in the plan.
Why wouldn't Hovey be considered the same?
I don't think they're looking at that as a speedway.
Pardon?
That's not a major thoroughfare, as explained in the traffic impact analysis.
But there wasn't that much of a traffic impact analysis done on Hovey Road on that, that section north of it.
Well, we have the traffic impact person here who can explain it to you.
We spent some extensive time looking at the distribution of traffic to and from the project from different sides of 93, with and without Foray. We do not anticipate significant volumes on Hovey because it's not going to be in the future a direct route. And as the chairman has explained, I don't think we want to have an alignment of road or features that encourage the use. And I think that the intention is to try to slow traffic through that area so it is integrated within the project rather than a complete and distinctly separate facility that maintains its current straight alignment once you get around the curve. It's part of the, the understanding of traffic calming and trying to make it a friendlier pedestrian environment rather than a car-centric environment.
But if there isn't that much traffic on it, and, I mean, it's not a speed zone right now, I can't see why we have to have that impediment to our direct course of traffic because my, I myself don't want to be, have to go through Woodmont to get home. I use that road multiple times a day and.
I think the, our intention as a team and what we think would fit in the context of town is to make it be a calmed environment rather than to encourage speed and encourage additional volume. I think we want to create that type of facility and look at the connections. And one thing we've stated in earlier meetings is that that's something that we will monitor as the development takes place, is that level of traffic and how we can dissuade that from becoming either a higher-volume or higher-speed facility. But they are somewhat conflicting goals of trying to make for that calm environment and yet still provide for a higher-speed facility for the people that may live there today. You know, they, trying to make it a manageable traffic environment.
I don't mean a higher-speed one for what's there today. I mean.
I think that's what I had, I had heard, was trying to keep it a faster speed.
It's not a fast-speed road, though. It's just like any other roads around it.
Mr. Chair, wouldn't it be true, though, that nothing would, it's just a concept right now, and it's just, nothing will happen until, until the subdivision or subplan, site plan level.
It's a 20-year plan, Ann.
I understand, it's just, it's just ideas. But I would just suggest that have the square off to the side, the Hovey could be straight, and that same square could be off to the side of it. And, you know, similar purpose, they can have their businesses around there, but at least it won't impede Hovey Road and the residents that use that. Well, that was one comment. Can I ask about the flexibility factors on page 66 and 67? Can Woodmont Commons add uses not in those particular areas, not in particular areas, for example, that move in from other areas, within that flexibility? The type of development that's not allowed right now within? It has to be, I meant, within that maximum?
It has to be allowed in that area for them to be able to.
Okay.
Increase or decrease that. The only thing that can increase or decrease is what is allowed in that area.
Okay.
So, for example, hospitals that are allowed in WC-12 on the east side, you couldn't then transplant that to the west side.
Okay, I'm just concerned about WC-10 on Hovey Road again, that same area, having more commercial uses. There's like 10,000 square feet of commercial and 20,000 square feet of nursing homes. If more was brought into that area right along Hovey Road, that's what I'm concerned about.
Could only be 15% more of 20,000 or 15% more of 10,000.
My next question is, there's some additional documents that are going to be added on to the master plan, as it's, as it states in the back. The Londonary zoning ordinance, we know that. The subdivision regulations, site plan regulations, and the typical details for site and roadway and infrastructure, 4.8 through 4.11. And I was wondering if the planning board has read those additional elements to the plan? Have they gone over it? The development. All, I think there are like, ended up being total of 940 pages. It's the current regulations.
Our current Londonary regulations.
Right.
Nothing new.
But yeah. But there's also the traffic impact studies and all that, which.
Ann, are you talking about on page 233?
No, I'm talking about what's not on, not in here.
Because on.
What's listed on page 233, is that what you're saying?
What's listed on page 233 is the master plan traffic impact assessment, the infrastructure memorandum, and the master fiscal impact analysis, as well as the development agreement, are going to be added to this master plan as far as a package. We have read those things that I just mentioned.
You read all?
Right.
Yes, and they're available on. Gone over them in meetings here.
And we've gone over them in every meeting.
Gone over them in meetings. All 900 pages?
I have this one right here, my handy reference. We've gotten this one, and you know how each month we went over briefing?
Right.
That's what these were.
That's what's listed at the back.
We've been reading a lot.
Yeah, we've done a lot of reading. Plus the development agreement that we just read thoroughly this past, since it's been out, past couple of weeks.
We've been busy.
Okay. If you've read them all.
And, and Ann, we've discussed them at every one of our meetings. Those were the briefings that we discussed at every one of these meetings. If you go back, you'll see how it's connected to each month when we discuss different briefings.
You've probably read them too.
Yeah, you know what, there's so much material, you probably don't even realize that that's what it was.
No, well, I was on the area called diversion of streets, page 6 of 25. Do you have that?
Of, of what? 625 of what, hon?
It's called the diversion of streets.
Is that a regular zoning ordinance you're talking about?
One of the additional documents that were added. The master plan traffic impact assessment? I don't have it with me right now, but I just put, it was called the diversion of streets, page 6 out of 25.
That might have been the transportation, but.
Was there a question about it, though?
Excuse me?
Was there a question about it?
Yes, there is. When I was reading, reading through it, it says about the way that, the impact of Exit 4A.
Mm-hmm.
And the studies that were done, the traffic studies. For example, Folsom Road to I-93 via Londonary Road. It says something like the 100% of the traffic would be mitigated and not go to Exit 4 if Exit 4A was there. If you think of Exit 4A and Folsom Road, do you understand where Folsom Road is? If you take Exit 4A east, you continue on, and it should connect to Folsom Road. Folsom Road would be diverting, I mean, excuse me, traffic from Folsom Road, according to the study, would be diverted from typically going Londonary Road down to Exit 4. And instead, it would go straight to 4A. I'm curious about actual, the actual traffic, though. For one thing, I was thinking, Exit 5, excuse me, Exit 4. For one thing, I was thinking, exit five, excuse me, exit four and exit five, on each of those exits, we have driver-friendly conveniences like gas stations and things like that. And there's nothing that's allowed like that in Woodmont and the subarea WC twelve. The nearest gas stations from that point of the exit four A is approximately one point seven miles east on Crystal Avenue, Route twenty-eight. And then the next one on Folsom Road would be on Route twenty-eight bypass, and that's two point one miles away. For me, when I get on a highway, one of the first things I do is make sure I have gas.
So, how close should the gas stations be?
Well, there's nothing along basically from twenty-eight, Route twenty-eight or Crystal Avenue all the way to exit four A.
So, people just have to get off at four and five to get gas.
Right, that's what I meant, because the study is saying hundred percent of traffic diverted.
Oh.
I'm wondering if we, if you really looked at the numbers, if they would be as accurate as we think.
Well, the only-
That was one if it was thoroughly gone over.
Yeah, but what should the-
The practicality in mind.
What should gas station density be? That's what I'm curious about.
I mean, if you get off four A and you go a mile, you can get gas, so, so-
We're talking about seven hours. We don't have four A.
I know, but I mean, should there be a four A?
I don't think we need to get bogged down in gas stations.
No, I know.
We're talking about the, you know-
Right, I know, but it's practicality and that's part of the document.
Okay. Cynthia?
To answer Ms. Champa's question, the traffic impact assessment was thoroughly evaluated by HSH. So, those numbers have been very clearly looked at, very thoroughly looked at.
That's true.
Add one thing quickly that-
I can't, I don't know the specific reference that you're talking about, but I can tell you that it's been thoroughly evaluated.
Did you find page six hundred?
And comments and recommendations have been made to the staff and to the team and to the planning board as far as measures. And that goes back to what we talked about a little bit earlier tonight with the maximum of trips with them now four A. But in terms of gas stations and whether or not-
Well, that's just one of the things as far as an analysis.
Right, right.
Yeah, let's not get bogged down with gas stations.
No, it's not just-
We have a master plan before us, Anne.
Gas station is the actual-
How much is actually being diverted from four to four A? Right. Not a hundred percent. And I, maybe Kevin can explain it better than I, because I'm not as familiar with the traffic.
It said a hundred, that's why I'm just-
I don't remember, I don't know. I don't see a specific record, so I don't know. Okay, next question.
Just to confirm that this, these volumes are generated not only with HSH, but with CLD as well, who created all the volumes that were used to justify the interchange for exit four A. So, it's based on a series of long-term assumptions for traffic diversions that will be the result of having a new connection to the interstate.
Can you explain the traffic diversion from four to four A, though? A hundred percent traffic diversion? I don't understand.
They're not saying from four to four A. They're saying from Londonderry Road and those different roads.
From Folsom Road, instead of taking four, it'd go through four A.
Right.
That's why I was-
Okay, so they would go through four A down the highway.
Right.
And the question is, should the gas station be diverted?
No, it's just the numbers as accurate as-
They're highly informed estimates.
Well, as long as everybody's taken a look at everything, I just want to say something about, one last thing about playgrounds and open space. In developments that are currently, that currently come before the board, if lot sizes are reduced, there's a provision for open space made in other areas of development. And when we talk about playgrounds and open space in this development, I hope we do assign specific amounts, sometime of, some type of provision that allows the people that will live there, you know, room to room, space for the kids, and just the typical everyday enjoyment. Because the lot size, some of the lot sizes may be so small, they will need that green space. And I want to thank the board and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. And I was just wondering, the next meeting will be the eleventh. What do you see happening as far as that meeting? I was wondering, when do you think it'll, you will be taking a look in it for the final approval?
I don't know the answer to it.
I mean, we'll-
Your guess is as good as mine. Yeah, yep, because that, the eleventh is when the requested timeframe will run out, so.
I know, it's frustrating to come to meeting after meeting after meeting, but the reason that we continue to have meeting after meeting after meeting is to get the questions that everybody has answered to our satisfaction and to your satisfaction. You know, I mean-
Oh, I'm not saying about, you know, I'm complaining about the timeframe, but I'm just wondering what to expect. Because as far as I understand it, the questions to Cynthia are due next Tuesday. Was that just for the board or for the public or just the board?
Everyone.
Anyone who wants, who has a question, send it to Cynthia.
And then would respond by the following Friday, that same week. And then the next meeting on the eleventh is the following Wednesday after that. I'm just wondering when the public would get to see Woodmont's response to that, the questions.
Probably as soon as we get it, it would go up on the website.
Well, if it's delivered on Friday, will we get it the following Monday or whatever?
On the website, Friday.
I hear Friday.
Okay, that's fine, so we'll have the weekend.
We have the weekend to study it.
Is that, is that Labor Day?
No.
No.
This week is.
This week, yeah.
Can't be.
It's coming Monday, it's Labor Day.
It can't be.
But, just to clarify one thing, I don't think that on Friday they're planning on answering a list of questions. On Friday, they're planning on producing an amended document that responds to some of these concerns and questions.
The amended master plan in response to-
That's what we misunderstood.
Questions from the public and questions from the board and questions from our third-party consultant.
Okay. Once the amended master plan is presented, does it go through any more hearings?
It'll go through a public hearing on the eleventh, which is planned because it's conditioned right now on the board granting the extension and then the continuing of this hearing.
Okay, is that the only hearing for the public on the revised?
So, so far.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, we probably should take care of the two motions we need at the request of the applicant. John?
I have questions, because they're all related to the development.
We're going to do that next. We're going to do that next. So-
Make a motion that we continue the plan to, maybe extend the sixty-five day clock?
Extend the sixty-five day clock to the eleventh of-
To the eleventh of September.
Second to motion.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn, to extend the sixty-five day window for our surrender decision, the eleventh of September. New discussion. Sign, all those in favor of sign of voting by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. 伸伸指， affirmative. Thanks, Rick. But I need now as a motion to continue this public hearing on the master plan to-
Second.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn. Sign no discussion, all those in favor of sign of voting by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. 伸伸指， affirmative. We're going to still continue-
Oh, we got to read this, too.
Oh, yes, you got to read that letter into the record. So, this public hearing is continued to the eleventh of September two thousand thirteen, seven PM right here. That is, once we continue this hearing, because we're still continuing the hearing.
Okay, so this letter, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to read it into the record.
Yes, certainly, ma'am.
Was sent to the planning board, to the town council, and the town manager. In the Dairy News, August fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen, page nineteen, there's a foreclosure sign sale at public auction for a local restaurant along Route one oh two in Londonderry that states along heavily traveled one oh two, Route one oh two, average daily traffic count of twenty-three thousand C attachment. Route one oh two is a four-lane highway in the business district with multiple traffic lights and multiple turning lanes. The Woodmont Commons projected traffic count is forty thousand to fifty thousand vehicles a day. Can you imagine one and a half to two times plus traffic along Gilchrist Road, Pillsbury Road, Hardy Road, Gordon Drive, Wedgewood Drive, Hovey Road, Londonderry Road, and many other local roads in Londonderry? The Woodmont Commons project, when presented, when first presented to the Londonderry taxpayer, was a walking community with less traffic. The Woodmont Commons project, if approved, needs to be revised to scale back the traffic. Example of this could be more single-family houses with a minimum of one-acre lots whose back boundaries match the existing house lots there that they abut. Or the high-rise structures need to be scaled down to two stories maximum, and structures like hotels, hospitals, multiple condominiums, and multiple apartment buildings need to be eliminated. Even if you are not in a butter or live near this project, you are going to be affected by it. The developer of this project wants the existing roads and any other existing improvements to be paid by the Londonderry taxpayer for the next twenty years. If it is illegal for the Londonderry Town Council to be involved in this project, something needs to be changed so that our elected officials are looking out for the Londonderry taxpayers. Attention, Londonderry taxpayers, you need to attend the Londonderry Planning Board and Town Council meetings. Email and write letters to them about this project before it's too late, and we are paying for this project for the next twenty years. Thanks, Walter and Marilyn Stocks, thirty-nine Gordon Drive, Londonderry, New Hampshire.
Okay.
That's part of the read file.
And-
As is Mike's letter.
Pass it on the read file, please. Yep, and we'll continue our public hearing with the development agreement. I just wanted to put that in there. As we had explained to us over here. Anne, John, you've got the floor now. Yes, actually, go through this would be rather lengthy. Just take questions and then we'll go through more of it. We're just looking for comments and questions and input for us.
My first question is, can somebody tell me what the origins of this document are and where they are in the process? Is this the sole work of the developers or is this a collaboration?
It comes from the attorneys collaborating together.
So, our attorney's-
Our attorney is-
Okay, well, I have, what time is it? I have a whole bunch of questions. I'm not going to ask them all tonight. I assume there'll be other opportunities.
Well, you could also- Could you just talk into the mic a little more, because people at home are not going to hear you?
I said, I have lots of questions and comments.
Send them to Cynthia.
But I don't want to go through them all night, quarter to eleven. So, I'd like to ask a couple of key ones. Is that all right?
Yes.
And I'll have opportunities next meeting to have more questions about this.
Well, send the questions to Cynthia, and she could-
What?
Send the questions to Cynthia, and then between she and our attorney.
No, I'd like to, I don't want to go take the time-
You want to do this publicly?
Let me just start and go through some of these key issues, okay? The first one, I think the most important one I have is, I guess I like this concept of developers agreeing to pay any shortfalls in the tax revenue if the development doesn't stay tax-positive.
Right.
That being said, the devil's in the details. Okay? Now, in this whole agreement, the when, and not if, this becomes disputed, okay? We're going to want to be able to go back to this agreement, and the agreement should answer the dispute and any of the obvious questions. And this is a really sparse document considering how important it is. For example, okay, I'm not crazy about the way we're going to formulate whether this is tax-positive or tax-neutral. I think a more equitable way to do this is, is for maybe collectively that the town and the developer to hire a CPA firm, a good CPA firm that has the horsepower and experience to be able to deal with the complexity of this particular concept going forward. And I would suggest that not only does the CPA firm work on this going forward, but they absorb all the information that's floating around from both sides of what's required. Then formulate a process by which this calculation is going to be made, okay? Including, I think, probably changes or information that the town is going to have to continually collect and put together and come to an agreement of exactly, in fine detail, that a CPA firm can take hold of. And when they're all done, say, yes, I followed those instructions and this is the answer. So, there is no dispute about methodology and all the rest of the things that can happen when you try to make this calculation, okay? The next thing I think this needs is, it needs for the town to get some sort of first security interest in something. Because this agreement's going to be passed down through, God only knows how many developers are going to be involved in this over twenty years. And you want to know that it's nice to have this agreement, but if the developer who is doing the work at the time when it goes negative doesn't have any money, it's not going to do you any good. So, you need to know proof positive that if it goes negative, there's money available for you to get your money, okay? The other thing is that I think it obviously ought to have a clause in here about dispute resolution if they come to a dispute. How are disputes going to be solved? You're going to go to arbitration, you're going to go right to a court, you know, all the issues about dispute resolution in there. The other thing is that I think there has to be a clause in there, and I can't exactly tell you what it ought to say, but basically it ought to say that when a town approves a budget and they approve, and a town approves expenditures by vote of the people, those are final. And if those votes and those expenditures are deemed via the process that you've put together to determine how these expenses that we've made affects the tax rate, that decision of the voters is final. There's no dispute by saying, well, I don't, you may have put this in the budget, the town voted on it, but they shouldn't have voted on that. They shouldn't have spent that money on the Woodmont development. If you don't have something like that in there, you're going to continually run into arguments about what expenses are, Woodmont's and what aren't. You have to, the agreement has to rely on the wisdom of the voters to make the right decisions. Am I making sense to you?
I'm not completely understanding what you mean.
Not with that last part.
Are you saying that if we-
Well, supposing, supposing that we go to town meeting and there's a Warren article put on that we need, you know, another fire truck for Woodmont development, okay? And we vote on it, and the town, the voters say, yep, buy a fire truck, okay? Well, the people on the other side, Woodmont's, what are you talking about? We don't need another fire truck, okay? You can't make us pay for a fire truck. And if the town has decided, okay, that we need another fire truck for Woodmont, it's a tri- truck for Woodmont. You don't want to get into picking away at the budget about what's, what decision- You don't want to get into picking away at the budget about what's, what decisions are made and how they're made.
Wouldn't that be a decision made before it went to the town, though? If you went to the town, wouldn't you say, we want another fire truck for Woodmont? The developer has or has not agreed to pay for part of it, now we want.
Fifteen years from now, or ten years from now, the developer is not agreeing to anything. If the town decides that you need a new school, you know, another substation, police department, God only knows, things that we don't even have today, okay? And the town decides they need them, and they need them because of Woodmont or the growth that Woodmont has brought in, you don't want to get into a dispute with the developers whether or not those expenses are related to Woodmont or not, because the voters have voted, and they said they are.
Using your example, Mary, you said if, if students come in, and the town thinks they need another school, and Woodmont says, well, you can ship them to Salem cheaper, you know. What, I think what he's saying is, it's, it's whatever the town decides, so.
I said the devil's in the details, and they are.
Can we just shake hands?
All right, can I, can I make, can I make the comment? When it comes to any public service in the community, it's based on the need for the entire community, not a specific development. So what keys a request for police cruisers, fire trucks, schools, and everything is the overall need in the entire community, not just one development? And I just thought I'd make that clear.
It depends on how the Warren article's written, for one. And secondly, some expenses of almost anything along those natures can, would be, end up by being allocated to Woodmont. If, if it's not clear what the fire engine's in for, and if you have, you have to allocate those costs, how would you allocate? How are you going to allocate the, the fire department's costs now? And then the next, the next dollar spent in the fire department over the above we're going to do right now, how are you going to allocate it?
Yeah, Warren articles have to be written in a very specific way.
This has to, the point I'm trying to make is, this, those kinds of things have to be worked out, and they have to be put into this agreement now, not when you have a dispute.
I, I think that those things that we can count on are, are in the agreement, though. I, I don't mean to be disagreeable, but there are specified certain things that the town can expect from them, and I think beyond that, we shouldn't, probably can't expect them.
I don't understand.
There's a lot of language in here.
The, the, did you see the paragraph?
Page twenty-two.
Are you talking development agreement?
In the development agreement, yeah.
You're talking about the substation they want to.
Police fire EMS, the substation, the.
Think long term.
The agreement for the schools.
Think fifteen years from now.
Right. What I'm saying is that those items that are specified in here, including the, the arrangement for the cemetery and the arrangement for the school land, that those are the sort of things I think should be the limit of what we expect, and, and that the idea of maybe someday we might bond something, and get into an argument about who is responsible for which part of it, I, I'm not.
That's the essence of this paragraph they put in here about, didn't, this paragraph basically lays out that between the town, I'm just trying to fill in, make certain that the details are covered, and there is a very specific way of doing this. This agreement says that the developers and the town will work together to determine, okay, what impact that Woodmont had on that, that year's budget, or that year's, year's tax rate, okay?
There's a section missing. They, this, this, this information that's not in there, that they've now worked on, and I think they've come to an agreement as a formula to, to determine that financial number of whether Woodmont is tax positive. It's, it's not in there. It's not in ours either. We just heard that they've done it, you know. We haven't seen it either, the details.
Okay, well, let me ask you another question. It doesn't, it's not, it doesn't mention in here, so I assume that it works like it's worded, but the clarification, if supposing, you know, in year five, they have to write out a check for a million dollars, okay? And then the next year, the tax rate goes positive by two, do they claw back the million?
Are we going to answer that?
I don't want to answer that one. I, I want to answer a different one, which is Mr. Freitas' comment. The, the version of the development agreement that is behind the agenda on the table here is, as far as I know, the most, the most current version, and that document on page eighteen does include the language that you're making reference to, which is the means of determining the fiscal impact, I don't know what.
So do we have on our, on the website here?
Position of the twenty thirteen report, using the following. One, real property tax revenues shall be calculated by the town of Londonderry Tax Assessor for all real property within the PUD area based on the assessed value as of April one of the previous year. Two, the town of Londonderry tax, I'm sorry, town of Londonderry Town Clerk shall calculate the motor vehicle permit fees based on the motor vehicles registered to addresses within the PUD area. Three, incremental general fund expenditures generated by Woodmont Commons based on methodologies employed in the twenty thirteen report, a copy of which is attached to this development agreement as an exhibit, which inputs updated to, with inputs updated to reflect, A, current data and costs, and B, current budgeting. Should said report indicate that Woodmont, taken cumulatively and as a whole, has placed a negative impact upon the financial resources of the town in the years from inception to the year of review, then the developer shall make a payment to the town to correct the deficiency.
Do you have Exhibit C attached to this?
I'm sorry?
In section, in number three, that you just read, incremental general fund expenditures, you referenced a report, two thousand and thirteen report.
Yes.
Which then says, a copy which is attached is Exhibit C.
Yes.
I don't have that. Do you have that?
You, you do have it. It was the handout that we made at the fiscal impact briefing in May.
So.
It was the report that Lucy Gallo of DPFG came before you to present, that RKGP reviewed and also commented upon.
It's just not here with us right now, in our screen.
It is, it is in the materials on the website as a document that is also incorporated into the master plan.
I'll, I'll tell you, I get a real problem with most of those calculations.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I don't see them as being reflective of what potentially could happen to the town.
We, I, I recall.
It was only today that I found out that it was Exhibits, that that was Exhibit C that you guys were talking about.
The report is attached for the purposes of presenting a methodology to be used into the future, to reduce the likelihood of a dispute over how to make these calculations. I understand that you had concerns at the time.
I had concerns then. See, to me, just, I mean, if I can just say, that's a report by an economist. To me, an economist really doesn't have the ability to come up with a cost basis like a CPA would.
All I can tell you is, our consultant on fiscal impacts has the utmost of credentials. Her work was reviewed by a peer review firm that was retained through HSH as part of the peer review process. They concurred with the methodology, and if not the, the specific result, at least the essence of the result, and it was all presented to the board and vetted publicly.
Okay. I, like I said, I have my concerns about that. If I knew that that was the methodology, I, I was under a different impression.
It's, it's more appropriate to have an independent CPA firm, okay, do this work, because then no one's going to start fighting across the table about whose numbers are whose. But it is very important that exactly how that is going to be done, so no questions come up later about how it's going to be done when you get into a dispute, or laid out, and, and it's going to take some work to get somebody to do that. But it's important, and it's got, this is a document that has to work for twenty years through multiple different developers and different people on the board. You know, this is, this is a, I mean, this is a clever and good idea, but the devil's in the details, and it's got to be worked out, and this is completely inadequate for what we're trying to do. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's more like a summary of what two, two parties to an agreement in principle have agreed to do, and none of the details are laid out, so this doesn't go into a dispute later about how it's calculated, you know, whether the town's wisdom is going to be acceptable to the developers in terms of what they deem is adding the right expenses to make. Those are all important issues that will come up. This, I don't, I, I'm not a betting man, but over twenty years, if this paragraph, this is the way to go through, this is not when, or if, rather, it, this will come up as an issue sooner or later. And, and it's a good idea, it's just got to be put together, so it, you make certain you don't get into a legal dispute about this later. You want this to run smoothly. You don't want to end up every year, so, oh, Christ, we're coming up to the calculation again, we're going to have to fight with the developers. Or a new developer comes in with no of the continuity of everything that's happened before. So where does he go? He goes to this agreement, and then he interprets it differently than we've been interpreting it for, you know, three or four years. This requires a lot more meat and substance and thought than what's in here.
Mr. Chairman? Can I, I'm sorry, just excuse me one minute. I, didn't we, didn't we discuss that, that this was the methodology, which has been gone over for a while now, between us and the, the town and the developer, that, that it was going to be reviewed by experts, that we, that we had it reviewed by experts, the methodology, to make sure that it met the need, right, attorney?
All due respect to this gentleman, and frankly, with all due respect to Council for either.
Take a. Just go to the mic, Mike.
I'm sorry, Mike Ramsdale, town attorney. This formula was presented as a fiscal impact statement back in May. Before that happened, Woodmont's fiscal impact expert queried all of the different departments of the town. They were provided with capital and operating costs. These are people who do this for a living. I'm not vouching for them, I'm just telling you what actually happened. They took those inputs, they put in the formula, they came up with some numbers. Those projections were presented back to the different town departments who had the opportunity to comment on them, before they were presented to this planning board. And before they were presented to the planning board, the third-party consultants, experts who do this for a living, came here, they looked at it, they said that we don't necessarily agree with all the numbers also. We do agree with the model, we do agree with the formula, and we think that their projections may be optimistic, but we believe even on our projections that it will be revenue positive in twenty years. As the development agreement points out, your concerns, as you voiced, were that, it's one thing to say that it'll be positive for twenty year, twenty years from now, but what about next year? What about three years from now? What about five years from now? And so we negotiated an agreement where they had to annually remain revenue positive. We went back to, I, I admitted, as, as others, that there are people who come up with these formulas for a living. I'm not one of them. So we went back to the experts. Their consultant proposed some language. We brought it back to the same people whose reports we'd used to vet their original ones, and who this board had accepted as their experts. We gave it to them, they said, we changed the language some, we want to change the formula. Instead of marginal costs here, let's use actual revenue. And so there were changes that were made. There were negotiations that took place. A formula was agreed on by the experts. But we didn't stop there either. A question was raised by the school district about, we want to make sure the right things were in there. The school district looked at it. I can tell you this morning that myself, the town manager, the school district superintendent, council for the school district, and the person who put all the numbers and the formula together for the school district, had a conference call, and so the formula itself, well, again, with all due respect to this gentleman, or somebody else who would say that, well, we ought to have an accountant do this, well, it's one thing, accountants do a lot of things, but they don't generally come up with formulas like this. Here, there were experts in this field, one from each side, who put together this, and this board already accepted that formula all the way back in May. And so that's how we got to this point.
And the accounting, Mr. Ramsdale, and the accounting from here on forward, year by year, will be done by, we, I think we vaguely, we talked about this quickly, there will be accounting produced, they have to produce.
That's correct. There are revenue numbers the town is going to produce, because they come directly from either the town clerk or.
As we've stated.
Or the tax assessor. They're going to be responsible for providing other information. I'm not going to stand here and say that over twenty years, there's not going to be some dispute. I'll bet there is, quite frankly, because somebody's going to claim that the input here should have been this number instead of that number. In twenty years, yep, that's going to happen. But what we know for sure is what we know is how you're going to determine revenue, and whether it's revenue positive or not. We already know that. That formula's in place. There shouldn't be a dispute over that.
Okay, thank you for explaining.
Wait, wait. What, you think that we've already decided that?
No, sir, I don't. Because here's what I.
The formula is, you say the formula is in place.
I said that there's a formula in the development agreement. That is one that was presented to this board when the fiscal impact analysis was presented and was vetted by the experts. I didn't say it's in place, it's in here. The board is going to make a recommendation to the town council, and the town council will have to vote on the development agreement. I don't make those decisions.
I, I guess, I would say, that I haven't gone through every detail of the input from all the departments and so on, but what little work I did do, or I guess I concentrated is on the school side, I think that it wasn't a very good job. I don't think it had the insight put into it that you would do trying to put a twenty year plan together. It was done like next year's budget. And I, and you may have had a meeting with the superintendent this morning, but the issue with the numbers that you got from the school board were operating cost expenditures and not their position on whether or not there was capacity, excess capacity in the school system to handle the Woodmont project. Because I talked to the superintendent, and I talked to the guy that did the numbers, and what they gave as operating expenses, and they never said that there was capacity in the school system to absorb the Woodmont project. So the formula's not there. There's pieces missing from what was done. None of these numbers, I don't think, actually went through a group that vetted everything that was given to these folks.
That is just simply not true.
Yeah.
And, and as much as I defer to the public comment portion of the meeting, and you know I don't step on other people any more than absolutely necessary, but I just simply need to disagree with those representations for your record this evening.
Specific ones?
Excuse me.
And I'm not going to get involved in the details, I just want to place my objection on the record.
Goes back to the, the presentation we had back in May.
I was, I don't know anything about.
There's a whole report, it's a, there's a lot.
And you know what, sir? I think that's the problem.
I have no idea what was presented in May.
I, I think the best thing is you go back and read it. There's a lot of detail in it.
It's on the website.
What does that have to do with this, what that has to do, I don't understand what it has to do with this represent, the.
It's, it's, it's the background for what you see right, right here in this report.
So, tell me what, tell me specifically what I'm looking for. Is it on the website?
The fiscal impact.
Yep.
The fiscal impact?
Fiscal impact. It's on the.
Oh, the one that was presented?
In May.
In May.
The one that was presented, I don't know when it was done, but I was, I was at, I think, the meeting with the fiscal impact. That was the one where you said that the, the project was going to be tax positive for the town?
After twenty years.
After twenty years, okay? And then, I think.
That's, 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 that's the one.
Right. And then, that was also, I think I made comments on that, and I brought up the issue of what was missing from that analysis was the five million dollars for Exit Four A, and some amount of money for the shortage.
Yeah, that goes.
And so on, which was missing from that analysis.
Okay, that goes back to, to May. And what this does is pick up the, the formula that was developed by the consultants that they had and the consultant that we had.
Yeah, I know that.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm not disputing any of that. I'm just saying that I think that you'd be better off having. I'm just saying that I think that you'd be better off having CPA firm do the work, that's independent from both the town and the developers, and they work between the two groups, they come up with a formulation of how they're gonna go about doing that. Okay? And if it turns out that it's the formula, everybody agrees that that formula works, and we have, you know, I'm hearing doubts from at least one board member, that he's not so crazy about the numbers, then if everybody agrees, fine. But I think that that documentation, and exactly how that's going to be done, should be in this agreement.
Okay, 'cause the formula doesn't have numbers.
If you decide that it's the formula, or it was done in that, then make it an attachment to this agreement, in enough detail, so somebody 15 years from now, or five years from now, can pick it up and say, "This is exactly how it's done." And that's what I think is missing. I don't think anybody could take that and repeat what was done by the consultants that came in here, that's all. I don't want to get into a contest later about how this is done. I want it spelled out, so there's nothing that is going to come up to be a gray area, because this will come up as an issue. I'll give you a perfect example. Supposing the town in-
Yeah, I think we're going through it over and over, John. You're kinda repeating yourself.
Okay, okay, that's, okay, I'm done with that.
I'm sorry, can you just take my phone back down?
I think there ought to be something in here to make certain that the corporate developers are, at the time, has the ability to make payment of this money, which means that you need some kind of a security interest in something. So, if the developer is unable to pay, you can get tax relief.
Thank you.
Understand that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the other question I had, and you ought to, you ought to clearly deal with how disputes are gonna be handled in this agreement. Now, the other question is, if the developers end up paying money out in one year, and then in the years that follow, you go tax-positive, do they get to claw back the money they paid? What was the intent there? Because the agreement's silent on that issue.
If it's silent, it doesn't address it.
There is no provision in the agreement that would allow for that.
I know. I'm asking the question because-
Right, I just answered it.
Okay, so there is no clawback? Okay. Now, another point in here, which I assume is aimed at a specific problem, it talks about, I can't remember where it is, maybe it's in the transportation study, about doing work, and the concept of the town supporting, or I guess the town using eminent domain to take property if the developers cannot make a suitable arrangement to buy property?
That only allows them to do that. They'd have to come ask us.
Yeah, I know, they have to come ask you.
We could always, we could say no.
You can say no.
Yes.
It states that.
I thought that was one of those, wouldn't unreasonably withhold it.
No, I've got the provision right in front of me. It says, "The town must deem it's in the best interest for the citizens of Long and Dairy." This entire section is really nothing more than a statement of what the law actually is. Anybody could ask the town to do that. If the town made the determination that it was in the best interest of the town of Long and Dairy, they could attempt to do that. It's all the same.
Okay. Now, there's another provision in here about, which I understand the developers' issue, but I don't know from a practical point of view how it works out. And that is, that if the developer makes improvements to a road, and they effectively build excess capacity into that road, and then another developer comes along and basically says, "Oh, I don't have to make any improvements, because you already have capacity on this road, okay?" If that's the case, then the developers would like the town, or no, I guess they're telling the town, that they have an obligation to get to, get effectively an impact fee from the developer, the new developer, so they can get reimbursed for the excess capacity they built.
Correct. And that's what happens now, even. That's what happens now, even.
You can do that now? Have we ever done it?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess my only suggestion would be, is that we put a provision in there, that the, if this becomes a legal battle, okay, that the developer, the original developer, pays our legal costs to defend it.
I think that's a little murky there.
Hmm?
That's a little murky there. Not quite clear.
Well, supposing that we insist that they make this payment to us, okay? And supposing they take us to court, saying, "You have no right to do that," and so on, and regardless of whether we've done it before, and it may not happen, but we don't wanna end up defending our payment back to the developer for that excess capacity, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's sorted out at the time. It all depends on who wins when the loser's, that type of thing.
Okay, I'm getting tired. Let me see if there's anything else in here. Oh, is there anything, actually, this development agreement, and the whole, all the agreements aside, is there anything in place now that actually says, when a developer builds a subdivision and so on, that the town has an obligation to take over, you know, make the roads public roads, and take over their maintenance or the sewer systems? Anything that actually says that we have to do that?
If there is-
We've probably done it in the-
If there's off-site impacts, yes. If there is off-site impacts, and also that the town holds an escrow, a certain amount of money for the public safety type stuff.
We don't ever have to take over private roads.
I'm sorry, I don't think I asked-
We don't take over private roads at all.
No, what I mean, is there any reason that the town has an obligation to take over any of those roads? Can they all be kept private?
Yeah, I mean, if they're private, they're private. The only way they could become public, they would have to petition the town council to make them a public road.
Okay, so, there's no-
No obligation to take it over.
No have to.
Okay. There's a funding concept for utilities. It's called a, it's called a municipal utilities district. Is that available in New Hampshire? You're saying there isn't, or you don't, you don't understand what they are, right? They're common in the southwest, I think.
Yeah, I don't think they're common here, and I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any. I mean, this is New Hampshire, so.
That's for your dad.
Now, the other, the reason I ask that, because they're asking, or potentially asking for, public help in financing, or paying for infrastructure improvements. I assume that means road and sewers and so on.
Yeah, that's basically, they can ask, but the town can say no.
Okay, so, yeah.
If it's appropriated any money, after the town meeting, they'll make the decision. Town meeting says no, doesn't happen.
So, they had mentioned the, you know, the tax, what is it, where the taxes for the development, like you wrote directly back, that to pay for the infrastructure? The deal that they're trying to make for the-
Tax increment financing.
Right. They specifically mentioned that, okay? Is that contemplated? You're interested in doing that?
I don't, yeah. It's something that they can ask, but it's up to the town to make the decision on it. You're in the driver's seat as a taxpayer.
Yes.
Yeah, you move along a little quicker, John.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I have some, frankly, didn't completely understand the concept of getting credits back on some of the various things, but I just, I think if I just read more, and think about it more, I'll understand it better. But that's enough for tonight, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. Anyone else? One second, Mike.
Mike Speltz, 18 Sugar Plum Lane. I have not had a chance to go through all of the document, but I'll go as far as I got with you. Paragraph three, well, I should, as a technical matter, there places provisions in the document for a date, and the provisions provide for a date sometime in August of 2013. I assume that's just a holdover from more optimistic drafting and a change, that we really intend to get this thing signed, executed in August. Is that correct assumption?
It was written in August.
Well, it's already the 28th.
I know, I know.
They might have to change that.
The council meets on Monday, I think, don't they? Or are they taking that Monday off?
The last date we had was for tonight.
No, Monday is Labor Day, right?
It got extended.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm reassured, thank you. Section Roman 3, paragraph A says, this is a quote from the paragraph, "During the public hearing, the council approved this document, subject to the planning board's approval of PUD master plan, as requested by the developer." That implies that the council is going to consider this document, and perhaps execute it, before they're advised by the planning board. That doesn't seem prudent to me. Councilor Frida, is that, was that the intent?
No. No. It's gonna be referred if it's passed, if it's recommended here to the council.
And that's exactly what the language says, is the council, the council considered public hearing after recommendation of the planning board. Planning board's recommendation will come first.
Well, if it says, "Approve this agreement, subject to the planning board's approval of the master plan," that would imply-
Correct.
The development agreement's part of the master plan.
That goes to the town council?
I read the language differently, but it sounds like we agree on the intent. Roman 3B provides a duration for the agreement of 20 years. I think it might be prudent to include a provision that says that if there is no substantial construction progress after the initial site or subdivision plan is approved for a period of X time, make our recommendation.
Four years in our regulations.
I think that that only applies to the initial start of work, though, right?
But then it would come under our site plan, which is, I think, a two-year.
Right, but what I'm saying is, they begin, they make substantial progress on the first subdivision, and then there's a hiatus, then things turn south or whatever. So it'd just be prudent to include another time clock in here that says that if substantial progress stops after the initial one that's in our regulation, so that we don't have to live with this agreement for 20 years, and, you know, for successor entities. Am I making sense?
What would be the drawback to keeping this in effect, even if they were, even if they were having a hiatus? I may be missing something.
Well, because I just think that, you know, the world might change, if there would probably be, for whatever reason, I mean, the town, they wanna do something differently. And so it might, it might be better to, you know, you've always got this on record, but to start from scratch, presumably with a new developer.
So it goes farther than 20 years, if need be, is your point?
No, I'm saying it would expire in less than 20 years, if they're, if, say, year 10, nothing happened for a certain amount of time.
I think it reads, I don't know if it's in here, but it could be a successor also.
Right, well, this applies, this agreement applies to successors.
Right, correct.
So, it could be, yeah, anybody. Could be the third successor.
Could be fourth, fifth.
Right.
We don't know.
So, I'm just suggesting that as a additional safeguard.
What if there's recession, and nobody's buying anything? Are you gonna punish the developer for not adding excess capacity?
Well, he always has the ability to amend this agreement.
Well, in the same sense, then, if there is an issue where there is a stalemate, we could always address it. Right? If that's the, you know?
I think both parties could always renegotiate it.
If I can, there is a provision about vesting in here, other than the 20-year provision. It says we're gonna follow the state law, and so, as long as there's substantial improvements done within a four-year period, the developer's gonna vest in his rights under the agreement.
Okay.
There is a provision in it.
Thanks.
And that's a protection for the developer, right?
That's state law. We don't have any choice about it.
And it would-
That is what the state law-
And it would apply to this master plan as well as this.
It's the law of the land, Mike.
All right.
The 20 years is also protection for the town, because it's our commitment to remain fiscally positive in each of those years.
Yes, yes.
They certainly hope that-
Next question.
All right. Paragraph, Roman 3C2. This paragraph presumes that the land on the east and west side of I-93 will be considered a single, large PUD. We had some initial discussions about whether I-93 meets the criteria in our PUD ordinance, that the land could not function effectively as a PUD. And I don't know that the board has ever taken a firm position on that.
I think we're well past that stage, Mike.
It goes along with another question I had. I heard Attorney Ramsdale say that the town accepted the economic impact analysis. I think I've been to nearly every Woodmont hearing, and the only votes that I can remember are votes to continue a hearing, or to continue consideration of the application. So to say that we've accepted the impact agreement, or to say that we've accepted the fact that I-93 is not prohibiting this from functioning effectively as PUD, I think that might be a consensus feeling, those two things, but I think we would search the record in vain to find a vote on those matters.
There's no specific vote, but I think it was accepted as we went along. There's no, questions were raised at the time, and those questions were answered.
Well, I definitely raised them. I don't know that I got a good answer, but perhaps-
We don't agree with everything, so.
This is the provision that talks about timing, and again, I think here is just interpretation of what we mean by phasing. In our PUD ordinance, we say that as part of the information provided, and Ari quoted it a little bit earlier this evening, there has to be a phasing schedule. Then, last meeting-
That is not what I read, for the record.
Well, I'll read it again.
Please do, because that's not what I read.
I'm looking at page 124 of our zoning ordinance, paragraph 2.8.9.2.20. Proposed times, this is a list of information requirements that are required to be part of a PUD application. Proposed time schedule for completion of the project, comma, phasing schedule, if applicable, depending on scale and type of PUD. I would argue that this PUD is of the scale and type that would probably be useful to have a phasing schedule. So, my feeling is that both, either in the master plan, or the-
Could you read the whole provision, please?
Plans for bonding, if applicable, and well-thought-out plans to ensure that the amenities will be completed as proposed in a timely manner. Now, in the interest of fully exploring this, this subsection is a part of a section called information, which is 2.8.9.2. And it says, "The applicant for a PUD shall-" called information, which is 2.8.9.2, and it says, "The applicant for a PUD shall provide the following information," and then skipping to the last sentence of that section, it says, "Many of these items may be presented as approximations or preliminary estimates subject to change where appropriate." And certainly, a phasing schedule could be subject to change. 20 years, you made the point, which is very valid, that market conditions can change, but the point is to get something, and perhaps you put it in the information plan where you're not, you know, tied to it, but it would be very helpful, I think, to the town officials to have some idea of what you've got in mind, of how the 600 acres is, is going to be built out. I think Lynn, you called it a vision, and that, that's fine, if you want to use that term, but right now, we don't have anything. And, you know, depending on how you end up treating the request to waive the phasing ordinance, you know, this, this could be all that you have to rely on.
Mike, just for your information, one of the conditions that I, I'm going to have before I personally approve the PUD is that Woodmont comes to us yearly with a five-year plan and a one-year plan as to what they're planning on doing, and if there's any deviation from that during that period, you know, between the, the year and the next year, that they come to us and present what that deviation is. But I think as businessmen, as good businessmen, and I'm sure they are, they have that vision and they can present those plans. And I think we need those as a town, so we have some idea on what we can expect.
Yeah, that would be an improvement, thank you. You know, it's also possible to take our existing GMO and phasing ordinance and just attach them to either the master plan or this development agreement and say that this is what we're going to live by. It's certainly fair that they have to only live under the, the things that are in place at the time we accepted their application back in November, I think, but if, if, since it is a 20-year project, if there's things that we want to make sure we bring forward, like the GMO, we could just attach it to here and say, and, and refer to it. I mean, I honestly don't understand, but I, I'll accept the attorney's advice that even though it says it won't expire if we renew it, that it expires and they're not tied to it. It doesn't make any sense, but this would be one way around that. Just put it in the development agreement. Section Roman three, subpar E, it seems to give the developer and developer's successors a perpetual right to intervene in land use decisions. This is the provision that says that every, every deed from the developer to a, to a subsequent developer, you know, I don't know, Macy's comes in and buys the 600-foot block and puts a really big store on that block, they're going to get a deed from Woodmont to the, to Macy's that's, that's going to have a restriction in it that says that they have the right to intervene in any land use decision that, that Macy's would want to make. And since it applies also to Woodmont's successors, it's, it's a perpetual right. You know, it's a restriction that will remain on the deed in every subsequent conveyance forever, and that doesn't seem like a good idea to me. I think there should be a sunset provision on that, whether it's 20 years or, or, you know, 10 years after the conveyance, or, you know, you know, pick, pick some, some number. There are places where we refer to various standards, highways and whatnot. I think it would be useful to add to those where we can agree to it, that we say, "In effect at the time of site or subdivision plan acceptance by the planning board." You know, this is 20 years. We're going to have, you know, different technologies and different approaches to controlling development, different subdivision regs, different site plan regs. I think we have to be able to say that those that are in effect at the time of the subdivision submittal or site plan submittal are the ones that should apply, not necessarily the ones that are 20 years old. And those are, that's as far as I got. Thank you for your time.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else? Where's Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Brown, Five Carousel Court. No, Mary, I don't miss this at all. But it's important, and I appreciate that you're here. I, I do need some clarification, and if the board will indulge me, I did not, I was not aware of the development agreement. I did my homework on the master plan portion before tonight, so I need some clarification as it relates to whether the development agreement has any nexus or connection whatsoever with the specific waivers that are in the master plan, starting on page 46. Is there any connection? I'm not a lawyer, I don't know how to read this. You guys were briefed, I know what that's like, but I'm trying to determine whether the decision on the master plan and the waiver piece is separate and distinct, mutually exclusive from the development agreement or not.
Maybe our attorney can-
I don't believe that there's a single waiver provision in the development agreement, not one.
Okay.
If I'm forgetting one, I apologize for it, but I can tell you, I don't, as I stand here right now, I don't believe there's a single waiver provision in there.
Okay. So-
Waiver's used.
If I'm correct, and tell me if I'm wrong, then the expectation is that when you go to, when you get to the point where you're ready to approve the master plan, you still have the, the ability, as of tonight, to not agree with some of the waivers that are presented, and they can be stricken as conditions of the approval, including residential phasing, which is waiver, waiver number two. It's not in the, it's not in the development agreement.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. In terms of GMO, apparently there is some nexus or connection in the development agreement, and I just, I just don't get it, because the GMO is a very specific ordinance on our books right now. It sunsets in the future. The application's operating under the current ordinance, which means it's in effect. If the council decides to reenact it before the sunset, it never sunset. How could this development not be held to the GMO? I'm, I'm missing something here. You can tell me how legally you make that hop.
This is the answer I'd like to hear, too.
It's English language and-
There's no waiver of the GMO in the development agreement. There's no waiver of anything in the development agreement.
Okay. I think you may have heard something different before.
No, it's just that the topic of bringing up the sunset-
I'm not being adversarial, I just-
Became a confusing side alley, I think.
No, I'm not.
Okay, let's, one person talk at a time.
By being adversarial, I apologize.
I, I wasn't reacting to you being adversarial. I, I agree that there was some confusion there, and I think that, for me, the confusion may have arisen because someone mentioned that there was a sunset provision as though it was pertinent. It doesn't sound like it's pertinent right now.
Okay.
So I am now clear that they are not accept, they're not asking for a waiver of the GMO. There is a request in the, in the PUD for a waiver, for a waiver to phasing. Sorry, I'm being really tired. So, that's, I think that's clear.
That's the same clarity I was looking for.
I have a question of Attorney Ramsdale. On page 21, section A, a little more than halfway down, it says, "Additionally, no future town development moratoria," or increases in town, well, just stop at moratoria. Does that apply to the GMO? Sure.
Increases in town development impact. That, that refers to any, whether it's a state statute or a, or a town ordinance that's not currently in existence. Once the developer has vested, like any other developer, the new ordinance would not apply to this development.
So to Mike's question, if the current GMO sunsets in 2015, this, this sentence would apply in no future town development moratoria, which would be the enactment of another GMO?
I don't believe I've ever been asked that question before, and I know I haven't given an answer to it.
Okay.
Because I haven't actually looked at it, because I don't believe I, I've been asked. My, I can only give you, my gut reaction to that is that the sunset provision will not have an impact, but I, please don't hold me to that. I'd like to get a, a, I'd like to make sure I'm right about that, but that's not, that's not my inclination as I stand here now.
And the only other question I have, and again, I apologize if it comes across the wrong way, I'm, I'm reading it, is, it's page six, item four, "Provides assurances to developer that it may perceive of the development in good faith, reliance upon the Woodmont Plan Unit of Development, Master Plan as approved PUD, and without encountering future changes in ordinances and regulations that will materially impair its ability to develop." I think I understand the intent of that, but I just want to get clarification, and maybe the attorney can help with this, that it appears that we're saying that for the next 20 years, no changes to any of our zoning ordinances will impact this development for the entirety of that 20 years. Am I hearing that correctly?
Once the developer's rights vest under state statute that's included in here, then no changes to the ordinances would impact that particular development. That's state law, we don't have any choice about that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else? Seeing, and we're going to, Ari have continued this hearing to the 11th of September.
All right.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I suppose, would you, would you entertain a motion to make a recommendation to the council at this point, or is that something you'd like to wait on? There were some conditions.
Yes, I think that would be, be proper, because I think the domain of this is, is details will be sorted out by the town council anyway, so.
May I, want to make a motion?
Okay, motion by Laura to recommend to the town council the adoption of the development agreement with a couple-
Couple, um-
The condition, I know that the, the planning board has to approve the master plan, and-
Terminology on water.
The water, water language has to be corrected. Read my notes, yes. Yes, the water language has to be corrected. Two things.
It's probably the water language has to be confirmed.
Yeah. It's good confirmation, okay.
I haven't even seen the calculations, all right.
There are no calculations, it's just a formula.
I haven't even seen the formula, the calculations formula.
Page, page 18.
You read it out loud, a little loud.
Yeah, I think you-
Well, we talked about C, and-
C is on the website.
See, right here. Number one, real estate property tax rate will be calculated, and number two, number three. No, no numbers or anything, it's all in words. Okay. Motion by Laura.
Second.
Second by Rick.
I have a question.
Yes, discussion.
So, we had, we entertained some public comment tonight. This document was received in our hands, the amended version, at four o'clock today. Was there any intent to do a public hearing on this?
There's a public hearing right now.
This was it?
This is it.
Okay, so even though we gave no opportunity-
Today.
But the town council's going to have a public hearing.
Town council's going to have a public hearing also on it.
Yeah, but our intent was to have one as well.
Yeah, and this is, this is it right here.
With the, with the document, so, so I'm clear, the document was released to the public today?
No.
The document was released to the public when you got it, whenever that was, two weeks ago.
But the amended version was-
The amended version was released today.
Today. So how you, how do you expect to have a public hearing on something that was released today? And I think it was like, what, two o'clock or something like that?
Four.
Four?
And we had our discussion on it.
Well, can I just ask Ari a couple questions?
I'm just concerned that we didn't, we didn't give the public enough time to review and have a hearing.
The approval body is the town council. We only make a recommendation.
So if, so if we receive the document at four o'clock, and we had a meeting at six o'clock, and we're here at seven o'clock, even for those that are on the board, did we have enough time to review this at all?
Well, in all fairness, the, the corrections did, did fulfill our questions that we had, and we went through it, I mean, so.
So you had enough time to read the entire document in its entirety at four o'clock till the time that we're sitting here?
Well, I, I reviewed the, the things that were in question and that were fixed.
Maria, that's not what I asked. Did you have time to read the entire document off the bottom?
I, I've read most of it tonight while I'm here, but I, but I purposely looked at the different areas that we questioned before I came tonight, to make sure that they were changed. So I, as one member, did look at the, the areas of our concern.
Okay.
And that's what we reviewed tonight.
And that's, you know-
I'm asking the members if, if they've had enough time to review this document, even, even with the changes-
I feel comfortable as one member.
That we received at four o'clock to the time that, you know, again, we had two hours, and you had to drive here, and you just said you reviewed it in front of the public.
No, I said I reviewed-
Okay, yeah.
She said yes, several times, yes.
I reviewed the, the sections that were of concern to us, that we, we wanted answers and corrections to at home, and tonight, I went over the, all of it as well. So I, as one member, am comfortable with it, but that's just me, so.
Cynthia's-
I understand that the public has not had a lot of time, I get that.
At four o'clock. One o'clock, I was going to say four o'clock.
12:53.
Can I just ask Mike a question?
Yes, yes.
Mike, why wouldn't we want to have a surety bond to ensure that they, if they have to make it fiscally positive any year, why wouldn't we have something, some kind of language in there that would say that? I mean, because we wouldn't have any idea of the amount, right? That might be one reason.
That's one thing. Two, because it's going to be an annual review, it's not like somebody's going to get that far out ahead, and thirdly, the master developer can't assign any substantial portion of the assets of the development without the town's approval, which won't be unreasonably withheld, but, so you don't have to worry about the developer assigning a significant portion of the development to someone who you don't have any control when you look at it. You could say at that point, yeah, we understand who the original developer was, but now this person we don't feel is secure with, we want a bond from that person, you could do that.
Okay, and why wouldn't we put some kind of language in there that talks about if there's a dispute, how that will be resolved? Is it just because it's law and you would go to court?
Yeah, I mean, we have in there that, that any dispute will be governed under the, under the laws of the state of New Hampshire, and it'll go to either the, I think we actually included the federal district court here, as well as Rockingham County Superior Court. The practical reality is that it would be unlikely that we'd ever end up in federal court, because you'd have to have diversity of citizenship, so none of the owners of the development could be citizens of the state of New Hampshire, residents of the state of New Hampshire. So it's, dispute would be resolved in Rockingham County Superior Court.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion from the board? So we'll go for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Snitches? Chair was affirmative, motion carries, goes to town council. That's when the details will get sorted out.
Motion to adjourn?
Have a motion to adjourn.
Maria.
Maria made a motion to adjourn.
You made a motion.
Second.
Second by Lynn. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.